Good afternoon, good evening. Welcome, everyone, to the Sacramento City Council. Would the clerk please call the role to establish a quorum?
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby?
Here.
Councilmember Warren?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Carr?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jennings?
Here.
Councilmember Guerra?
Here.
Councilmember Chenier?
Still here.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Here. Still here. Well, good evening, everyone. We do have a quorum. I would like to ask, please, the North Natomas Little Leaguers, I should say, the champion North Natomas Little Leaguers, to please come forward and lead the council in the pledge of allegiance.[51.62][51.62](APPLAUSE)
So, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members, good evening, everyone. Thank you to Little Leaguers. We're going to talk about you in a little bit more detail in just a moment. In fact, without objection, you can sit down. Go ahead, please. Without objection, I'd like to take the special presentations before the public comment. That'd be a nice thing to do. Excuse me?
It's not objection. Public comment or public comment?
Yeah, it's okay. Councilmember Ashby?
Thank you, Mayor. Before I bring these very talented young men up and brag on them for a minute, I do, Mayor, at your, with your, okay, I'd like to just make one quick announcement. And since, I think I saw the chief in the room, maybe he's in the back. Chief Hahn, I want to thank you and your team for working with CHP over the weekend and through the nights for the last five or six days. We had a young man, 15-years-old, from Endercombe High School hit and run in a fatal accident on El Centro Road in North Natomas. Quite a tragedy. And they have made an arrest, and there is an individual in custody. And very importantly, I just received word a few moments ago that I am able to tell the community of Natomas that a portion of that story was fabricated. And to alleviate some fears, originally, the individual driving the car indicated that he had been carjacked at a local supermarket at gunpoint, and the car was therefore stolen. That portion of the story is inaccurate. And he has been arrested and will face charges for the death of the young man. No one wins in this situation. Both people are young, and it's a very unfortunate occurrence, but I am very grateful to the Sacramento Police Department, to the Highway Patrol, to the DA's office, and to our community for their help in bringing that family some closure. So, Mayor, I just wanted to make that announcement. It's a pretty big deal, and I know the media will-
Go ahead, thank you.
-be looking for those updates.
Of course, our condolences to the-
Yes, to Jamari Moore from Endercombe High School. Okay, but on to happier news. Would you guys come to the podium for me for a minute? This is bragging rights. These young men are champions, and they're going to have to help me with this, with explaining to you how many games they won, because I just have a hard time tracking it all. Basically, they won, and then they won, and then they won some more, and won, and won, and won, and won, and won, all the way until the last game that you can't possibly win, and then the World Series after that, which escaped them by one victory, a game that they were leading most of the game, which gives us something to work for later, right, you guys? We don't focus on that game, we focus on all the games that you won. At just 13-years-old, Mayor, these guys won district, sections, and the state tournament, and they beat Arizona, and went on to play Hawaii for the west coast, and Hawaii bested them. But these young men, I would love to have them introduce themselves. I have their names here, but I think it's better if you guys introduce yourselves and tell them what school you go to. And I think you're all 13, but if you're different ages than that, maybe you can tell them that, too. Go ahead.
I'm Bradley Carlton, and I go to Endercombe High School.
I'm Jeremy Davis, and I go to MP3 Middle.
I'm Nicholas Stringer, and I go to Endercombe High School.
I'm Christian Stringer, and I go to Endercombe High School.
I'm Logan McIntyre, and I go to Endercombe High School.
I'm Nathan Bergen, I go to Leading Edge Middle.
I'm James Benjamin, and I go to Endercombe High School.
I'm Brendan Field, and I go to Endercombe High School.
I'm Chris Myers, and I go to Westlake.
I'm Connor Smith, and I go to NHA Charter School.
I'm Hunter Haywood, and I go to Our Lady of the Assumption Middle.
I'm Christian Rivera, and I go to the School of Science and Engineering.
Very good. Nobody wins alone, and in this instance, there are some great coaches to this team, and I think we have, I think we have all four of them here, and a team mom. So Todd, Jerem, Ben, Bruce, and Heather, are you all here? Would you stand up, please? Thank you so much for taking these kids to victory. And there are parents here of all these young people who, you know, I live in North Natomas, so I know, a lot of practices, a lot of dedication to get these kids to and from all of those games and events. And our Little League, led by Dustin Romero, which may be a name that sounds familiar to many of you, his wife Melissa Romero works for the city of Sacramento. He just handed the president title over to Tony Perez, and this league, this is sort of my warning shot to all of your high schools, this league is formidable, these kids are very good. And we built them, the city of Sacramento built them some fields about three or four years ago that are second to none. And I want to take this moment to also thank the Parks Department. I think I saw Chris here, the head of the Parks Department. Shannon, Roger, Frank, Eugene, Theron, and Marvin and Paul, who keep those fields as nice as we possibly can for these young men. And this is exactly what we're hoping for, that that spirit of community between their parents, their coaches, their teachers, and their fields and their parks would help lift them up and watch them just achieve these tremendous goals. So, my understanding is, Bradley, are you the captain?
Right.
All right, why don't you step to the microphone and tell the mayor a little bit here about what it took for you guys to win, how many games you won?
Um, I think what it really took for us to win all these games is, most of us have been playing together for probably five, six years at least now. So there's definitely a lot of team bonding, and this was probably the first year where not only did all the kids get together, but all the parents enjoyed each other. And I think the strong bond between all of us was definitely what really propelled us to go that far.
Great. So I thank Councilmember Ashby, we're all so proud of you, and, you know, I can't help but saying and thinking that there is a team in, currently in last place in the National League West, who could use-[476.03][476.03](LAUGHTER) -who could use some of your help, all right now, our giants, but-
Maybe they need some bonding experiences, do, Mayor?
In a few years. But what an achievement, to almost get to the Little League World Series. I mean, you guys really made Sacramento proud. Thank you.
They've gone farther than any team in North Natomas's history, and we don't know of another team in the city that's gone farther, but I thought maybe Alan would know. I'm not sure if anybody's gone.
Yeah.
Turn on your mic. And I don't know if you guys know Councilmember Warren, my colleague of baseball fame from Grant High School, who was actually drafted by the Yankees.
Well, the, ironically, the kids from Del Paso Heights went to the Little League World Series back in, like, 1968, I believe. And from that team, they had three first-round draft picks. So that would suggest that some of you may have an opportunity to play at the professional level if you're so inclined. So is that, do any of you have an interest in playing professional baseball?[543.38][543.38](LAUGHTER) It's a wonderful opportunity, and I was blessed to have had an opportunity to go out. And I can tell you that it has really made a big difference in my life, the fact that I had a chance to go out and play with some of the best athletes in the world. And so I would say, if you stay on this path, you guys also will have an excellent opportunity to go and do it. So congratulations to you.
Thank you. Councilman Chenier?
Thanks. I want to just add one thing, my congratulations to you guys, I think it's great. Airport Little League actually won the World Series, the Little League World Series in the '60s, when-
Been a long time, you guys. Good job.
Only been 50 years.
But I remember, so.
Point of order. The Land Park Little League in 1983 won the world championship. We just celebrated the 30 years of that in 2013. So I look forward to seeing you back in 30 years to celebrate your success.
There's a long tradition for you guys that you're fitting in, so congratulations.
That's great. And I don't know if maybe Councilmember Jennings wants to say something to you, too, and, you know, these guys are young, they're 13, they don't know who all of us are, but Councilmember Jennings played for the Oakland Raiders, so he, too, is a professional athlete.
Yeah, I had the opportunity to talk to them earlier and gave them marching orders as to what their expectation is, and they all signed up and gave me a strong handshake that said they are up for the challenge. And I just want to thank them, I want to congratulate them on their accomplishments that they had, but I also want to take time to thank the coaches and all the parents on the role that you played in helping to mold these young men, and, you know, set the expectations for them, and teach them how to work together, and how to bond together, and how to win together. And these lessons not only will play true in the game of baseball or any sport, but also in the game of life. And so I know that they'll continue to take these lessons on for the rest of their lives. So congratulations, young men.
Yeah. Really proud of you guys, a league that is younger than they are. They did really well, and we're really proud of them. I'd like to ask all my colleagues to please come down and take a picture with these champs-
Oh, sure will.
...and their coaches.
Let's do it. Okay. We have one other presentation, and it's my privilege to make it. This is recognizing the Sacramento Community Emergency Response Team. And, you know, excuse me, we're, that's okay, we'll let everybody get out. Thank you. Please take your time. You guys might want to stay for the rest of the meeting, by the way.[809.23][809.23](LAUGHTER) Because it's going to be interesting.[813.32][813.32](LAUGHTER) Okay, well, I may join you. I, I don't know. Exactly. So, I have the privilege, along with my colleagues here, to recognize the Sacramento Community Emergency Response Team. I did not know much about the team. I mean, I had heard of it, and then on the Fourth of July, I went out to the Sacramento River just to say thank you. They were holding a big barbecue, and I realized the extent of the incredible volunteerism that this group of Sacramentans plays in helping to save lives. They are the folks that essentially provide lifeguard services and so much more for, to make sure that people are safe in Sacramento's parkways along the riverfront. They do so many things in, just a little bit of a history, that the CERT team, as it's known, is a multi-functional volunteer response team that performs basic fire suppression, light search and rescue, first aid assistance. Was developed by the LA Fire Department in 1985, and in 1994 FEMA felt that the program was so valuable that it ought to be expanded, and in 2004, 50 states, three territories, adopted the CERT training module, and Sacramento Fire Department took it on as well. They are essentially adjunct, they're not firefighters, but they're adjunct to our fire service and our police service, and they do it all on a volunteer basis. 6,800 hours of service cumulatively among the program volunteers, serving our 530 residents. And I was just so impressed with what I saw on the Fourth of July that I wanted them, or at least some of their representatives, to come forward and accept this resolution of thanks from the mayor and the city council. So can we please give them a big hand? Who is here?[946.00][946.00](APPLAUSE) Is here from the CERT team. Come on up, you guys. And girls, of course. I mean, guys generically. Come on up, please say a few words about what you do.
Mr. Mayor, city manager, and council members, thank you for taking the time to hear a few words from the Sacramento CERT program. I'm here today to speak to the council about the little-known gem within the volunteer groups here in Sacramento, which there are many, the Sacramento Fire Department's Community Emergency Response Team, known as Sacramento CERT. For those of you newer to the council, the CERT concept, as the mayor said, was developed by the LA Fire Department and adopted by FEMA, exists in all 50 states as well as other countries. The CERT program is designed to teach citizens how to prepare for and how to respond in the hours and days immediately following a disaster. Over 25 hours, citizens are trained on topics such as disaster preparedness, fire safety and utility controls, disaster medical operations, light search and rescue, CERT organization, disaster psychology, terrorism. At the end of the training, students are given an eight-hour disaster drill to give them a sample of what they will face during a wide-scale disaster in our area. A properly maintained CERT program is vital to assist first responders during a disaster, as local agencies are often overwhelmed within minutes of a disaster happening. Having a portion of your population trained to respond provides first responders with the type of force multiplier, allowing paid responders to concentrate on the most serious parts of an incident while volunteer members help elsewhere. Regionally, CERT programs have adopted additional training levels, providing CERT members between 46 and 116 additional hours of training, enabling citizen volunteers to supplement emergency services during times of disasters. Locally, Sacramento CERT has provided support to Sacramento Fire and the city of Sacramento during storm and flood events, protests, large community events, such as the Fourth of July that the mayor of the county visited, by providing medical services, traffic control, site security, and other support as needed. Regionally and statewide, Sacramento CERT trains and mentors other programs across the state, provides logistical support during major disasters, most prominently the Rim Fire and the Valley Fire, and provides personnel to assist with missing person searches. We are also the only team in the country to mobilize and demobilize the FEMA Search and Rescue Team, which is Sacramento's own Task Force Seven. Sacramento CERT has become a program that is recognized both domestically and internationally. In particular, we have been the subject of study by the Japan Intercultural Academy of Municipalities and emergency planners from the countries of Chile and China as models of how CERT-
Why don't you introduce the guests here?
Oh, sure. With me here today, I have Steve Motta, he's our, my C-shift operations chief. I have Kathy Winkelman, she's our animal response team leader.
Who I met out on the Fourth of July.
Exactly, yeah.
So I remember.
And Jerry Walrath, he's my logistics chief, and we have some other people, but we didn't-
Okay, how many volunteers?
We have about 150 active volunteers, we've trained over 1,000 members.
And what's the average number of hours the 150 volunteers put in?
I would say, for those 150, between probably 50 to 60 hours minimum that they put in a year.
A year. I mean, so this is, I mean, people in Sacramento should know about this. I mean, this is the kind of stuff that goes on in our community all the time, unsung people who are just out there helping people, saving lives. I just think this is a very cool thing, okay? Thank you. Let me turn it over to Eric Geddon, Councilman Geddon, Councilman Hanson, and I'm going to present this, and then we're going to get to public comment.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I want to want to thank the CERT team, but specifically, one of our most active CERT members in District Six, Kathy Winkelman, who has been a constant supporter of our neighborhood. And during the education about our levees and flood awareness, was part of the CERT team out there, educating folks about every single piece about being prepared, having your backpacks prepared. And more importantly, for those of us who have furry friends at home, we sometimes forget to pack for them, and because people love their pets so much, they will add additional time to move in a time of an emergency. And I think that kind of education, every single time, from how to be prepared and assist our fire departments, is what's making our city a safer city because of all of the work with Kathy Winkelman. So a big round of applause to all the CERTs, and thank you Kathy Winkelman for all your
Councilman Hanson?
Well, I couldn't have said it better than Eric, but just last two weekends ago now, we had a potential drowning in Land Park, and I know the CERT team, along with the Fire Department and the Parks Department, all kicked in to try to see if this child had fallen into the pond. And luckily, he didn't, he was somewhere else in the neighborhood, but that prompt response, along with what you're doing to help save lives on the Sacramento and American rivers, is just a testament to how good you are, but how important you are as well. And I know Councilmember Garrett gave a shout-out to Kathy, she deserves it. I think that no one should ever be shy advocating for things they believe in, and certainly nobody's ever accused you of being shy, Kathy. So keep it up. So keep it up.
Okay, thank you very much for both presentations. Let's now move to a public comment on items not on the agenda. I understand we have about 10 speakers?
I have 15 speakers.
15.
My first three are Larry Duff, Michael Voy, and then Eric Frame.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name's Larry Duff, I'm a longtime resident of Midtown. And recently, a neighbor asked me to look after her dog for the day, and I agreed. And in a short time, we ran out of things to talk about and do. So the dog and I went over to the new dog park on 19th Street near Safeway, and it is a really impressive facility. There's an area for small dogs, there's an area for large dogs, they have a drinking fountain for dogs, as well as the owners, nice lighting, benches, shade trees, plenty of room to run around. So later on in the evening, I got on the city website, and I found out there are 12 dog parks in the Sacramento area. And after reflecting on that, I became upset, because the city doesn't seem to be able to do for the homeless what they do for the dogs.[1447.65][1447.65](APPLAUSE) And I don't see the justification for 12 dog parks when the homeless have zero, they have nada.
And next speaker is Michael Voy, then Eric Frame, and Robert Copeland.
Evening, Mayor, council members. Want to start, I attended the law and legislation committee meeting this afternoon, it was earlier today, and there, I can tell that there are people that, and everyone on the council is concerned about cannabis and doing this thing the right way. And so really, I want to weigh in on a couple of things, thoughts that I have that I haven't heard raised. I'm back again from the August issue of Inside Magazine with an interview with Joe Devlin. And then, there's a quote in here, it says, "These are not mom-and-pop operations with a few plants. There's an organized element to this, they go in and purchase or lease multiple homes." Now, I spent some time in the real estate industry, and I don't, and I spent time in banking and finance, to aggregate, and hopefully this isn't, there's one or two groups, but to aggregate 1,000 homes, these aren't done under individual leases or individual ownership. It's implication in this statement. The first thing that comes to mind for me when I read this is whether or not there's money laundering, possible RICO violations, because cannabis is still federally regulated. And you're leaving your real estate industry and the people that execute these leases and these agreements open to money laundering or participating in that either knowingly or unknowingly. So I think that active enforcement is called for, and eradicating these 1,000 homes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll be talking more about that. Go ahead.
Next speaker is Eric Frame. Following Mr. Frame is Robert Copeland, and then Joe Deng.
Good old book. I've said it before, I'll say it again, just to tell people that might not know in the audience, the FBI called Sacramento "the hub of child trafficking," and KCRA 3 reports that Sacramento is the second-worst child trafficking city in the USA. I have spoken to the new chief, and I spoke to the captain just today, and they seem okay with only having two investigators in the city on child trafficking. I'm not okay with that. I also went to the final budget hearing, where the DA gave her final budget, and it dedicated less than $100,000 to the investigation of human trafficking. If we are the hub of human trafficking, according to FBI, why does the DA devote less than $100,000 to its investigation? All right, let's move on. Why has the city closed public bathrooms? Why has the city shut off water during the hot summer? Why are there noise machines preventing the homeless from sleeping? Who is pushing drugs into the homeless population? I wonder that especially these days, because it's always, the excuse is, oh, they're on drugs, the homeless are on drugs, so that's why we can make them an other, that's why we can treat them as an other. But who is pushing the drugs into the homeless population? That's what I wonder. We need to repeal the inhumane, as Mr. Steinberg has said, and unconstitutional no camping ordinance, and we need to put those cops, which are wasting their time harassing the poor and harassing the homeless, and put them on the child trafficking and on the drugs, to find out who is pushing the drugs into the homeless population.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you very much. That's it, your time is up.
Next speaker is Robert Copeland. Following Mr. Copeland is Joe Deng.
Well, today I was over at the Capitol as part of the Resident United Network, we was doing some lobby visits for housing, especially SB 2 and SB 3. I think the city should contact their assembly members, or senator, and support these two bills, because what we need in Sacramento is more housing. Today I saw representatives from Riverside, Sacramento, and Bakersfield, not Bakersfield, but San Jose. And I think they're doing a better job than the city is doing on housing. Can we do better than the state on housing? And that is a challenge, by the way. And if you don't do-
And if, and if you don't do better, we can always recall you. Recall everyone that don't support any bills that support housing in Sacramento. And yet, last week, I was outside when they, when they was doing the water ordinance. Why was your wire in the sidewalk in front of city council? Can you answer that? Water is not supposed to go on, it's supposed to go on the plants, not the sidewalk. So, who report when the city fails to live up to their duty? I do agree, this part of the city property right in front, right in front of us, and I actually, what was going on the sidewalk? Can we find the city for, for illegal acts? Thank you.
Next speaker is Ju Deng, and then Arthur Ringwald. Following Arthur is Mackenzie Wilson.
Good evening Mayor Steinberg, council members, city manager Chen, and Madam Clerk. My name's Ju Deng, and I am a city of Sacramento employee working as a stationary engineer for the Sacramento Convention Center complex since May 2002. On the behalf of my other four stationary engineer, we have proven that we are a functional, experienced, highly trained team. We, as the city employees and the owner of Memorial Auditorium Convention Center and Community Center Theater, have a vested interest in maintaining the facility at the highest standard. For the Memorial Auditorium, there are special sets of recommendation and guidelines for repairing some historical items. Our engineers have a knowledge of this and are actively involving in renovation, upgrade the projects such as restorations, lighting, waterproofing, roofing, and HVAC systems. We also have a proven ability to upgrade the chime automation and maintain each daily operation that so many of us enjoy hearing the play. We can maintain the organ lift, historical plumbing items, lighting fixtures, doors, and we know more about the history and the values of certain items such, such as organ, chime, woodworks, and hydraulic flow. We are proud of having the needed ability to perform foreign duties every day, maintain, repair, retrofit, or install HVAC system, chiller or boiler systems, hydro, hydraulic system, mechanical and electrical equipment, plumbing work, automation, fire prevention system, regular or automatic door. We also perform duty such as painting, fabrication, roof repair, masonry work, drywall repair, carpentry work, fire system testing, or generator testing. We had a large scale repair work and project done in-house which may have contracted down normally in other facility. For example, we installed HVAC system for the server room, lighting fixtures installation for exhibit hall A and B, security cameras throughout the facility. The in-house work has saved city a lot of money.
Thank you. I need you to, if you have a long letter, by the way, really appreciate that you've come before the city council as a city employee to talk to us about this. This is really important and it prompts me to ask, to remind the manager and all of us that what we want to do is have an interim report of some kind back on not only the negotiations with the Kings, SMG, and Live Nation, but also a report on the so-called meet and confer process with the employees. Because we've said very clearly that we want to consider this new direction, but only if our workers are protected and only if our local arts institutions are respected. And so, you've come here and it's, it takes some guts. I'm so glad you did. Why don't we take the letter though, since your two minutes are, the two minutes are up?
It's almost done, but I, I, we're very happy to send, hand you the letter.
We can do that and ask the clerk please to make copies of the letter. I want every member of the council and the manager to have the letter. And then, you prompt us to ask for the right kind of an update so that your concerns can be addressed. It's very important.
If you allow me, probably almost finished.
Okay, finish reading the letter, sir. Go, go. Sorry.
Probably more point.
Go ahead. I'm giving you a little bit more time. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you Mayor. The cost of a new building automation system funding through the CIP on new construction is high. The automation system can reach up, it could be reached to $1 million. The new equipment and the system of the new construction project is not cheap as well. It makes sense to have a team in the city to maintain the new system and equipment. History has demonstrated that non-owner team messes it up easily because of taking shortcut lack of ownership incompetence. Shortcut and incompetence leads to problems being handled with a unnecessary rewiring, modification, change of parameters, or reprogram, which result in serious consequence in the future. According to automation technician, it's not only very costly, but also very difficult to get a quick response a month or months later. It's very common, but our team is able to maintain the new automation system or equipment in-house.
I need, I do need you to wrap it up here. We have a lot of speakers and it's a two-minute limit and I've, I've allowed you to go over a couple of minutes already.
Okay. And I thank you Mayor and the.
Okay, thank you. We want the text, we want the whole letter so that we can review it. We'll make it part of the record and we'll ask for that report back, okay? Again, really appreciate your coming. Thank you. Let's move on to the next.
Our next speaker is Arthur Ringwald. Following Arthur is Mackenzie O. Wilson, and then McWorthy.
Mr. Mayor and the city council in particular, maybe Mr. Hanson. Yes, I was reading, I was here at the meeting last, I was here at the meeting on last Tuesday and I was very upset about the behavior of some of the demonstrators. And I've read more about it in a story in the Sacramento Bee the next day entitled, "Council Won't Try To Restrict Residential Bullhorns." And it was printed in August 17 of the Sacramento Bee. Okay, as a resident of, I really was very upset about the right of behavior and I guess, I'm sorry that Sean had to put up with this type of right of behavior. It's not conducive to having a republican form of government, I don't think. And people have a natural, people have the rights to, I was also concerned about hearing about the picketing at Mr. Hanson's house. And even using, the picketers even use bullhorns. I was very concerned about that and maybe we should have to kind of cool it. The First Amendment, as I've said, does emphasize a natural right to assembly and to ought to join an assembly. But it also emphasizes our natural right not to assemble and not to join an assembly. One should not be forced to join an assembly. One should not force Mr. Hanson or anybody else to join an assembly. That's the First Amendment. A man's home is his castle. Mr. Hanson has certain rights to his castle on his property. Right? Perhaps the protesters should demonstrate, sever the public place, which is over there in the park. Public place is not one's castle or private property.
Mr. Ringwald, your time is up, sir. Thank you so much. If you have a letter you'd like to submit to us.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate telling me.
Nope, nope. Your time is up, sir.
My time is up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, sir.
All right.
Thank you. Next.
Next speaker is Mackenzie O. Wilson, then McWorthy, and David Plag.
How've you guys? It's been a while. Some of you remember me as the 515 organizer. Currently now, I am the Health Economics Life Liberty for All Lead Organizer, Community Organizer, and I am also the Vice President of the Sacramento Justice League, which is a coalition of lawyers that work on civil rights, criminal rights, and family law cases, plus a couple of other things. I come to you today because I've had to spend the last two weeks diligently organizing in opposition, me and the gentleman do not share the same sentiment. I've had to spend, like I said, the last two weeks diligently organizing in an attempt to let you guys know that we are disappointed in the current language that has been proposed and written by the Sacramento Police Department and been proposed by Steve Hanson. If he does not want people rioting and, or rioting, protesting in front of his house, maybe he should be paying attention to what his constituents want. I want to also say, yeah, okay.
Excuse me, we're not going to direct comments personally.
And you can say that, but it's still my first constitutional right. Anyways, I'm here to tell you that we are in a disagreement with the kind of attack that you are putting on the First Amendment and the further criminalization that you are putting on the homeless and on our, our houseless community. You guys are getting rave reviews for the ways that you guys have been handling this situation, yet for some reason, the language I'm reading is telling me that you're going to further take away their rights to feed themselves, clothe themselves, get food, the way that they're, you're going to further criminalize their, their place to be. You want to close off the city hall area at a certain time. That is ridiculous because you want to talk about time spent for like conductives, or what's the word, sustainable working conditions. You're trying to close the areas off when you guys will already have gone home. Like the, the things that I'm reading in here are very, very wrong and I'm glad, I'll take 10 more seconds. I'm very glad that it's being held at the Law and Ledge Committee, but I am here to let you know that we are paying attention.
Good.
And that we are going to keep coming.
Good, and you should come to the Law and Ledge Committee as well.
We're there, we were there earlier this morning. Yeah, and I, like I said, September 19th. I look forward to seeing you then.
Thank you very much for coming. Good, you too.
Next speaker is McWorthy. Following Mr. Worthy is David Plag and Faygo Clark.
Good afternoon, panel. On the new, whatever you got, should go to court before you do anything about an agreement. You're doing something here that going to put in aggressive law enforcement into three neighborhoods, Oak Park, Deafers Heights, and South Sacramento. And furthermore, you are doing something that you are ambushing the young chief coming. And I don't like that, not at all. But now, when the Jason there met with the three people about this, we would like to see those people's names be on file. When he got information from the police department, we want to know those people that came to him, what capital it, we want to see that. Because see, we see a pattern of Jason there. When this man come in over here as number six, he rushed the violence. When I come in here and spoke pertaining to something, he accused me to be anti-Semitic. That's your problem. Now, the police department going to suffer here. I'm going to be gone to South Carolina and do some legwork on my background of white. When the situation here that we see happening, we subject, get some people killed, right here. But we're going to say to the people, what you do is to vote down cell tax. When we see the young man, the child situation, we got to go back and look. I'm an old man. We got to look, that's, that's the practice and understand homosexuality. Understand people that, all people that not born homosexual is in that, which is doing things. Go back to Charles Manson. You'll learn a lot if you go back there about the sex child that we have here and it going to continue and we cannot put, because people in the loop is involved in the child situations here. Pedophiles. The churches are involved. So, be aware of what you're doing and get somebody to go back and take a good look at what is going on here. It's a child.
Your time is up. Next.
Next speaker is David Plag, and then Faygo Clark.
Good evening Mayor and City Council. My name is David Plag. I'm with the Del Paso Boulevard Partnership. What I'd like to, to propose and to request is that we slow down the permitting process with the cannabis. It's just going way too fast. District 2, and Alan can talk about this, we have 30 to 45% of the applicants. I don't think the city is really ready for this yet. I know the states are, the state is making changes within rules and regulations. I've got, the zoning administrator will be hearing applicants as of Thursday for conditional use permits. I think we need to slow it down. I think we need to make the right choices. I don't think we can afford to make bad choices at this point. There are still way too many questions dealing with the 600-foot rule. If you're allowing conditional use permits to be issued, are, is the building department actually being brought into the process before the conditional uses are being approved? Where will the 1% go? I mean, everyone's talked about this, but no one really knows where it's really going. And I would like to propose that the city puts into their code that that 1% stays within the district. If they're the ones dealing with these issues, they need to stay within the district. And, and that's.
That's in the code.
No, well, no. That's not mandated. That's mandated from the city and the city is going to decide where those monies are going. I think that there are way too many questions involved at this point and I think we need to slow the process down.
The only thing I would urge you is to please stay tonight, participate in tonight because we've got a lengthy discussion about how we're going to, how we deal with the 1,000 or so illegal grow sites in, in the city here. And how we gain the resources to be able to hire the law enforcement personnel to be able to combat the illegal grow sites.
Let me just make this point, just for a second. Joe Devlin and his staff are doing a great job, but we are rushing the process way too fast.
Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you for coming. We appreciate it.
Next speaker is Faygo Clark. Following Mr. Clark is David Andre, and then Shahira Hyatt.
So, that's a segment of an article I'm reading concerning a panhandling ordinance, very similar to the one you're working on right now in Frankfurt. What's the name of that city again? Frankfurt, Kentucky. It's being overturned for being unconstitutional and a violation of First Amendment rights. Right here, it specifically says someone standing at a prominent intersection displaying a sign that reads, "Jesus Loves You," or one that says, "Not my president has no fear of criminal liability under this ordinance." But, another person displaying a sign on public streets reading, "Homeless, please help," may be convicted of a misdemeanor. There's other ones that I'm currently looking into that say that it's not illegal. You cannot put a buffer zone over free speech zone. And that was relating to people outside of abortion clinics. So, basically, they can't constitutionally put a buffer zone at people yelling at people for having their choice of what to do with their own bodies, but if somebody's saying they need help, you want to put a buffer zone on so that they can't be anywhere where they can actually, you know, maybe get some help? Like, hey, you can't be anywhere where there's people at to exercise your free speech. That's not guaranteeing or protecting our free speech. It's actually taking it away. There's nothing aggressive about saying you need help. Keep these soliciting alms ordinance in place. That one actually addresses aggressiveness. This just tells, tells the people that you don't want homeless people eating since it's illegal to serve food anyways.
Give your testimony.
And by the way, I've been being nice so far. That's about to end.
Our next speaker is David Andre. Following Mr. Andre is Shahira Hyatt.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to point out the current ongoing extortion to our homeless community. That's my, I redacted, that's my mailing address. I'm one of the homeless people that live here in Sacramento. I did eight years in the California Army National Guard. I did 20 years as a teamster here. Before that, I worked for Sprachgol Sugar Company. I worked for Burns Investigative Services. I have an outstanding record, yet I am being criminalized. I have already paid the city of Sacramento over $2,000 in parking fees. Those are the $53 fines we get that everything that I can hear is that money goes to the out-of-town arena investors. I just got this the other day. This is a letter from a private corporation that debt on homeless people are being sold to. $2,000. Over $2,000 there for a guy who sleeps in the streets. What the hell is going on here, guys? Everything we're saying is true. Look at this and follow up on it. I live in the streets and I've already paid over $2,000 in fees and fines and done over 60 hours of community service and I am still getting this and it's, it's going bigger and bigger and bigger. How is anybody supposed to get out of this?
We can look at it. David, please.
Thank you.
Please hand it to the clerk. We'll look into it. Of course we will.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Shahira Hyatt. Shahira Hyatt?
Yep.
Good mic, Stella.
Hey, yeah. Good evening Mayor and members of the council. I'm just here today to talk a little bit about the city's approach to homelessness. So, in 2015, I wrote a publication on the criminalization of homelessness and its impact on young people in California that was largely informed by the voices of young people here in Sacramento. The report was about 10 pages long, but it could have easily been just one sentence. Business associations pay politicians to get cops to put homeless people in jail. How well is this strategy working out for us? We've seen homelessness increase almost 40% since 2015 and four of the highest months in 2016. of the highest months of anti-camping citations issued, um, two, including two under Mayor Steinberg's term. It seems like the city's strategy is based on the logic of, "That'll teach 'em." In fact, the city of Sacramento is trying to teach homeless folks that living outdoors isn't the glamorous lifestyle they thought it would be when they signed up for it. Let's take their tents and see if they still want to be homeless. That'll teach 'em. No? All right, then let's close public restrooms. Maybe then they'll long for the house life they could have if they'd just get a job. Still no? All right, well, how about if we make sure that people can't go to sleep for any amount of time anywhere in the city or we'll arrest them? Surely no one could survive that. But maybe we're still enabling people. Even though we don't provide food, water, shelter, or restrooms, I kind of think we should take away their ability to pay for these things. So let's introduce an ordinance preventing folks from asking for the help they need to survive. Very courageous. Asking for help is so tacky, and quite frankly, my right not to be asked to help someone in need is a higher priority than their right to live. Gosh, I'm so happy the market is free because absolutely nothing else is. And we don't have any better ideas, I guess. So, City Council, my proposal to you is to stop doing harm and start doing less. Repeal the anti-camping ordinance, reopen public restrooms and drinking fountains, and for the love of humans, do not pass the anti-camp, the panhandling ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
And next speaker is Mike Sella, then Elizabeth McDaniel, and Hannah Williams.
Hey, thanks, council. How you guys doing?
Good. How are you doing?
Good, thank you. I'm also here to talk about homelessness, share some thoughts. Uh, I spent last week working at River City Food Bank. Um, I'm not bragging, I just volunteered there to help pay off a red light camera ticket. Uh, there are plenty of good people there doing all they can to help the homeless get the help they need. California has so much food, people just need to know where to go sometimes. Besides that, we have activists and advocacy groups, and with funding coming from everywhere except the county, of course. I got the feeling that if I were homeless, I could navigate the city, scoop up all the resources available, and live in relative stability. What does, is often the case, these programs tend to target those, uh, kind of high-risk individuals who are the least likely to actually use them. What's missing most is communication. When you head down to the river, you realize how difficult it might be to push a target cart full of canned goods there. People want the city to do something, but what exactly? The solution for most cities is to provide permanent and stable housing. But as building and development problems have proved, no one wants a homeless shelter or permanent homeless housing near where they live. This is just another instance of a "not in my backyard" situation. We don't have a homelessness issue, we have a city, country, politician, and especially a human empathy issue. The issue of homelessness has not unironically reached the doorsteps of our actual homes. Last week, we all watched as legislation was proposed that would limit picketing and protesting in residential areas. While we can understand Representative Hanson's predicament, this proposal only further entrenches the "not in my backyard" attitude. If elected public officials can set a physical boundary between themselves and other people's basic human rights, then why shouldn't taxpaying homeowners? No one wants someone holding aside, outside their driveway, just like no one wants to look at a homeless shelter from over their fence or from out their window. Yesterday, the whole continent looked up at the sky, even if it caused us harm. Even the president. We were warned. We were warned. Wear eclipse glasses.
Your time, your time is up here.
Okay, that's my last thought. Maybe in this case and in this city, we need to purchase some empathy glasses. So what we're seeing no longer bothers our eyes. Instead, we can look right at it and begin to understand it. And when the next eclipse comes in 2024, maybe we can be bored by it from the comfort of our homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Elizabeth McDaniel. Following Ms. McDaniel is Hannah Williams, and then Chris Nielsen.
Good evening. God bless you all. So sorry to hear about what happened last week. Believe you me, I, I was praying for you a couple of days prior, so God's got your back, okay?
We're fine.
Yeah, I, I know, I know.
People out there we worry about. We're fine.
I know, but I still pray, okay?
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right, I want to set this item here. This is a pot. Okay. I'm going to read a little bit here. Ah, first of all, I say, "Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Elizabeth McDaniel, and I've lived in two locations simultaneously in Sacramento for almost three years now. Um, now on a consistent basis in the city of Natomas. Hate to be the bear, bear of bad news after all the hurrah that went on earlier, but this is your district, uh, I believe so, Jeff Harris. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank the mayor for responding to my letter. I wrote a letter to your office on April 26th and also June 12th of this year regarding the water quality at Point Natomas Apartments."
You have about a minute left, so I just want to make sure you get to your, to the key points so that we can understand what we can do to either help you or to, or to take, uh, input your point of view on a, on a particular issue, okay? You can set it back to a minute, please. Thank you.
Okay, okay, yes. I, I am-
Pot and everything, just tell us, tell us-
Okay, I am here, uh, for help this evening.
Okay.
Because you did respond in kind, and I thank you so much.
Okay.
This pot here is what, um, the tenants, whatever's in the water there at Point Natomas, um, it's, this is the results of it. All of our quickware is, is damaged. Um, we're consuming this, we're brushing our teeth with this, with this water, we're bathing in this water. The, the management company is saying that it's the city's issue, and when you responded to me, the city is saying that they turned, we had an issue a year ago, uh, this month where they turned the water off, okay? They said that the city turned the water off. When I double-checked, did my research, the city turned the water off at Point Natomas Apartments in 2003. And they put out door hangers. I have a video of that stating that it was the city who turned the water off and changed the water quality.
So I don't want to interrupt, but I want to, we want to try to help solve your problem here, because the letters back and forth sometimes can, um, not, not move us forward. Now that you've taken the time to come to the city council, and we appreciate it, we'd like to put you in touch with one of our, either our lead staff members, the appropriate council member staff, and we'd like to sit down with you and see if we can, look at all the correspondence and see if we can help resolve the problem, okay? So that you don't have to go back and forth with, with letters and phone calls. Fran Hoboken here, and Bill Bucic is, uh, Bucic is in the audience as well. If you can, um, if you can, uh, meet with Ms. McDaniel in the back of the chamber here and make, either discuss now if you have the correspondence, if not, to make an appointment for tomorrow, so we can get right at it, get to the bottom of it, and see what we can do to help you.
Yes, sir. Thank you so kindly. God bless.
Thank you so much, Ms. McDaniel. Appreciate that you came to the city council.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, very good.
Next speaker is Hannah Williams. Next speaker is Hannah Williams, then Chris Nielsen, and Moses Amaro. Hannah Williams, but Chris Nielsen. Is Chris in the audience?
Uh, just really quick. We have an alley issue between Sixth and Seventh Avenue, between 33rd Street and 37th. Uh, it's not drivable. We've had four fires in the last year, and fire trucks can't get through. We get, we have illegal dumping on a weekly basis. Uh, grass is taller than I am, and it's a fire hazard, and nothing's being done. We called , uh, almost a month ago and got a work order for the alley to get cleaned up, and it's still hazardous, it's still not safe. And if the fire trucks can't get down the alley to put out fires, and that puts our families at risk, that puts our property at risk, and it's just not acceptable. It's tiring. I don't understand why we have to, also, also we're looking to get alley closures, and we have to foot the bill to stop people from illegally dumping, which saves you guys money. So.
Councilman Chenier, if you could-
Get in touch tomorrow.
We'll get in touch tomorrow with you. We have your information here.
Contact.
We'll get in touch with you, okay, and try to help. Very, very good. Okay.
My last speaker is Moses Amaro.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On January the 10th of this year, there was a really big storm, the first one, I believe, of the season, and, um, I was driving my vehicle, and it was damaged by a city manhole cover that came off during the rain. And, um, once my vehicle was damaged, I immediately put on my raincoat and got out the car and was helping other vehicles, so nobody else was damaged. And, um, I reported the incident as I was, um, instructed to, sent in my claim, and it was rejected by the city, by the York Services, and then I also had put in another claim, and I had to go possibly take the matter further all the way to small claims court. And I had spoken with several people who worked for the city, and they told me that this is something that happens quite a lot, and that the city usually is responsible for these matters, and they would fix it. But I'm running into a whole bunch of hurdles trying to get paid to get my car fixed, to the broken. And I was wondering-
Okay.
-if they knew that this was going on with the-
We have, uh, Public Works, Public Works Director Hector Barone in the back here who can talk to you about this, and once again, we'll do our very best to try to help you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you again for coming to council. Means a lot. There's Mr. Barone right back there. Okay, thank you very much. That is, um, the testimony for items not on the agenda. Let's get to the scheduled agenda tonight and begin with the consent calendar. How many, we have one, one public testimony on the consent calendar. Anything particular to read into the record, Ms. Cuppy?
I have nothing to read in the record, and my one speaker is Eric Frame.
Mr. Frame, welcome. What, what item are you speaking on, sir?
18.
18, file item 18. Okay?
Ready?
Mr. Frame, go, go.
All right, vacant lots. We have a problem with too many vacant lots in the city. That's a quote from Mr. Steinberg. What should we do with some of these vacant lots? Hmm.
This is-
Maybe we should house the homeless.
Vacant non-residential spaces, not a vacant lot.
Oh, vacant non-residential space, pardon me. What should we do with some of these vacant non-residential spaces?
Make your point. Go ahead.
Perhaps we should house the homeless community. For instance, I wonder, how many people, uh, sleep over in Caesar Chavez Park every night? Does anyone know? Audience, you're welcome to shout out if you know.
No, you're not. You're testifying before the council. Talk to the city council.
I'm going to wager maybe 50 to 70 per night sleeping Caesar Chavez Park. You know what I noticed when I'm over there feeding the homeless illegally every week? Um, is that there's two vacant buildings right across the street. You know, the teal one, and then there's like a, an orange one. Maybe you guys can help me out and find out who owns that, and maybe we could actually get it, you know, into a valuable piece of property to maybe house people instead of just sitting there collecting dust. Maybe we could hire some of the homeless that are sleeping in Caesar Chavez every night, get them to help clean it up, and then provide some housing for them. I mean, it's just an empty building right there, right next to all these people that sleep in the street every night.
Thank you very much, Frame. That's good news.
I'm still going, I've still got time.
Well, if it's on this item, fine. If not, your time's up.
Well, I'm still talking on this item. In regards to vacant lots, I know, but vacant, the word vacant's in there. Uh, there's vacant lots all over the place, there's a problem with them. So, um, I'm wondering if Mr. Warren's, uh, temporary tent city issue could be thrown up in some vacant lots that are a problem, you know, since the homeless are citizens of the city?
Thank you, sir.
See you next week.
Okay, consent items. We have members of the councils who want to speak on one or more of the consent items. Councilmember Gedda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to pull item one and move the consent calendar with items two to, um, 18, uh, and also want to thank, uh, all of the folks working on the Sacramento Center for Innovation, Union Pacific, Councilmember Hanson for his work on making sure that, uh, we can provide some economic activity, uh, over at the power in area. And then for item one, um, I'd like to, uh, take this off the agenda for a further staff briefing with, uh, my council office.
Okay. Without objection, that's fine. Um, thank you. Councilmember Hanson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Garrett, for those comments. Um, he was referring to the sort of trade we're making, opening up Ramona Avenue, but giving up a, an at-grade crossing on C Street in Midtown. And actually, I wanted to ask Nick Theocritis, if he's here, a question about it, um, or Hector. No, number 13, not number nine and one, but I believe.
William Schunk with Engineering Services.
Hi. Um, so there's just two questions. One, I wanted to make sure that, um, at the, where the main route in will be now to the new bike trail entrance at 19th and D, that we are planning a four-way stop there, because right now, the cross traffic doesn't stop, and it's already somewhat dangerous for bicycles.
We're looking into it.
Um, okay. What does that mean?
Uh, we're still waiting to get the, the traffic report on that, and then we'll implement any recommendations to come out of that.
Okay. Um, the other thing is that we were working with Union Pacific, and, um, since Ha, since Nick isn't here, maybe we can't get a clear answer on this. And I, I don't want to delay this because of that, but it's very important. We've been working with Union Pacific to extend the trail down one more block from C to D to not impede access.
And we're working on that.
I understand they rejected our application, and, uh, we're appealing that. Is that correct?
We're appealing that and have a meeting next month to talk to, um, UP and CPU scene, as well as Caltrans, to see if we can come up with a solution that does work. It's not off the table yet, but we are working on that appeal.
All right. Well, just, you know, as we move forward on this, it's really important that we, uh, protect the access to the American River Parkway. Um, and, and these two facets of this project are really important to its success. So as we move forward, um, I'm not going to change the item, I'm not going to pull it off, but I'd love to give staff direction with the councils, okay, that we, we resolve those two issues favorably, um, so that we get the four-way stop and we do ultimately extend the trail, um, down to D Street so that that access point can be, um, preserved.
Mr. Mayor, I, I will echo that comment, having, starting to, uh, bike to work once or twice a week, trying to catch up with Mr. Chenier, coming off that bikeway, um, yeah. It's, and, and having those stop signs, I think, would be critical for public safety.
Okay.
Thank you.
Staff, I think, has some direction.
With that, I'll second the motion to move the consent calendar.
Consent calendar's been moved and seconded with the exception of item one, which is being continued. Uh, no further comments. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, abstain, the consent calendar passes. Now let's, it was without obje, without objection. Hope that's good enough. Okay. Uh, file item 19. Public hearing item 19. This is a third-party appeal of the Swanston Oaks subdivision. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, and members of the Sacramento City Council. My name is Garrett Norman, and I am an assistant planner in the Community Development Department, who is a project planner for the Swanston Oaks subdivision project. This project is located in the Upper Land Park neighborhood at the northwestern corner of Swanston Drive and Santa Buena Way, and includes the unbuilt portion of Fourth Avenue east of Interstate 5. The applicant is requesting to subdivide approximately 1.62 acres into 10 parcels for the construction of 10 single-family homes within the single-unit dwelling or R1 zone. The request also includes the abandonment of the unbuilt portion of Fourth Avenue. The requested project entitlements include a tentative subdivision map to create 10 lots for single-family residential, tentative map design deviations to create a non-standard, permanently dead-ended street on Fourth Avenue, and to create parcels with no public street frontage, site plan and design review with deviations to lot width, depth, setback, and bulk control, and a tree permit to remove seven private protected trees. The project went before the Planning and Design Commission at a public hearing on June 22nd, 2017. The here, after hearing public testimony, which included concerns related to parking, safety, and environmental impacts, the commission passed a motion to approve the project. After approval, staff received two separate appeals of the Planning and Design Commission's action to approve the project, which is why this project is before you tonight. The first appeal expressed concerns to localized flooding and impacts on the levee along the Sacramento River. The Department of Utilities has noted that localized flooding is common in this area, especially after heavy rainstorms, which is due to the high groundwater table. The Department of Utilities also notes that the project is required as a condition of approval to provide onsite storage for all new stormwater runoff caused by the project. The Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency, or SAFCA, is responsible for the management of the regional flood- of the regional flood control system. SAFCA wrote a letter to the appellant dated August 4th noting that the project would not have an impact on the levee system. This letter is included as attachment thirteen in the staff report. The second appeal raised air quality health concerns to future residents of the project based on the project's proximity to Interstate Five. Staff coordinated with the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District and added two new conditions of approval on the project. The first is to require the HVAC ventilation filters for each home to include a minimum efficiency reporting value of thirteen or greater, and the second condition is to increase the vegetative barrier between the proposed homes and the freeway sound wall. These two conditions have been applied to other projects throughout the city that are developed within close proximity to a freeway. Staff supports this project because it achieves general plan policy related to infill development by activating a challenged, underutilized area within city limits while providing additional housing units, is compatible with the surrounding single-family homes in terms of architectural design, height, and setbacks, and provides additional ownership housing opportunities on a residential infill site close to downtown. Staff recommends the city council deny the two appeals and approve the requested subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. We do have public testimony on the item. We do not? The appellant, okay, they don't have to sign up under the public testimony. The appellants are welcome to come on up and present. You're not limited to the two-minute rule. Your court had a reasonable period of time.
I'll keep it relatively brief.
Brief is more effective, of course.
Brief is great. My side, too. You also have all the paperwork that I submitted to the Planning and Design Commission and...
Please identify yourself for the record.
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, councilmember Steve Hanson, District Four, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you this evening. I think I am referred to as a third party or appellant, so let me make that a little more personal. I'm Marcia Devine. I've lived on Swanston Drive in this same neighborhood for over thirty years, seen a lot of changes in the neighborhood, but one thing that hasn't changed is its charm and its warmth. I know scores of neighbors, most of whom move in and pretty much want to stay. About the Swanston Oaks development, the small, high-density infill project in a traditional Sacramento neighborhood seems to bring with it an outsized and quite probably negative impact on the surrounding area, particularly with respect to flooding. So I have three primary concerns and a request. My first concern is the current condition of Santa Buena, as acknowledged here tonight, acknowledged in the original staff report and the revised staff report. The street floods. Not a trickle, like you'd find in certain streets in Little Pocket, but bubbling up and streaming from cracks in the middle of the street. There's pooling of water, both in the street and bubbling up from soil next to the sidewalk. In winter 2017 and in other winters where the water table is high, as acknowledged tonight, DOU trucks make frequent, routine checks of marked areas, not clearing leafy drains, but where much of the water up and down the street streams up from beneath the street. That's happening without additional development in the lot at the end of the street. Currently, that soil is acting like a sponge for groundwater and seepage from the river. What will happen when the eight to ten houses, still a little unclear to me how many, replace what's essentially a sponge with a brick? Crumbling combined sewer system is already overtaxed, as acknowledged by the city. How can it possibly be concluded that adding more development will improve the street flooding, particularly along Santa Buena? My second concern is that the city is crowding the levee with added urbanization at a time when our counterparts across the river in West SAC are moving away from the levee. The Army Corps has completed a levee setback project in Southport, right across the river from this site. Houses were actually removed, not added, to move development away from the levee. Sacramento is doing the opposite. West SAC is adding trees for riparian restoration as part of its flood control plan. Why is Sacramento permitting the removal of trees in this parcel? My biggest concern, though, is the lack of response from both the city and from SAFCA. I don't think that the tutting of real concerns is helpful or wise. Both the Planning Department and SAFCA point to the eventual levee repair that is on track to be completed by 2025. It should help with localized flooding and seepage, but there's no explanation that's been given to me or that I could find for this assertion. All SAFCA wrote in the letter to me with respect to levee repair in our area of the Sacramento River was that it was ninety percent design completed. What does that mean? Is that an assurance that all will be well until the project is completed? If so, say so. In 2011, the county of Sacramento produced a report that includes the city entitled Local Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. In it, they say that likelihood of future occurrence of localized flooding is highly likely. They go on to say, in part, choosing not to develop in areas that are often subject to localized flooding will reduce future risks of losses due to stormwater localized flooding. My back-of-the-envelope calculation using a methodology similar to that used by the county is that if only a hundred houses in my neighborhood, five houses up and down the length of Santa Buena are flooded in localized flooding, the cost to homeowners could start at fourteen point five million dollars. My request is that the city take a breath and study this particular project, particularly with respect to flooding risk, and provide a clear, supported, understandable risk assessment plan in plain English. What's the harm in taking a closer look? Consider it a pilot to develop a method to assess whatever benefit might accrue to the city overall. Increased revenue, an increase of affordable housing, maybe, a commitment to high-density development to reduce urban sprawl, and measure this against the potential risks to the residents near and far, and the potential benefit of development or not developing to them. We're all on the same side here. The city's mission statement is to protect, preserve, and enhance the quality of life for present and future generations. I support this. If this project and subsequent projects get us there, say so and say how they do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for cogent testimony. Appreciate it. Do we have one other appellant? Again, you're welcome to take a reasonable amount of time. If it's the same argument as the first appellant, you could even make it briefer, if you don't mind. Thank you.
I will try and make it brief. Thank you, Mayor and City Council for hearing these appeals. I don't think I should be here. I really don't believe that this... I'll get to that a little bit later, but keep in mind, I shouldn't be here. This should have been something that should have been addressed during the Planning Commission and wasn't. And from hearing a lot of the public testimony before you today, I don't envy your job at all and I understand the need to delegate a lot of these decisions down to the Planning Commission. But for that to work, certain standards, certain minimum thresholds for public health should be expected at that level. And those are the things that I have addressed within my appeal. In my appeal, I asked for a full health risk assessment of this project, and that's in line with SAC Metro's air quality management district's protocol that they set in place several years ago for citing residences so close to major roadways. And in the, the staff went back and addressed, spoke with SAC Metro, at least that is what's within the staff report here, and decided that from all the other projects, the ones that had any mitigation of being so close to roadway, what it resulted in was installation of HEPA filters and a vegetative barrier. I'd like to point out the fact that within the protocol, for it to assign a health risk assessment, it needs to fall within seventy percent of the worst-case scenario. And the worst-case scenario is a major roadway where the residences are cited to the east side of the major, in a north-south running roadway. And that is this project. It is literally on the other side of the sound wall of a north-south major roadway and it's on the east side. This is the worst-case scenario for air quality when it comes to citing residences so close to a roadway.
So air quality?
Correct.
Street flooding?
Well, and then when you go into D sixty-one of the staff report, which is the conditions that the SAC Metro air district has brought forth, I'd like to, if it's possible, I'd like to suggest a modification to the language because while the staff came up and stated that the statement was that there should be a vegetative barrier between the roadway and the homes, the actual language in the staff report says that there should be, the vegetative barrier should be maintained or enhanced between the freeway ramps. There are no freeway ramps anywhere near this project. And I would ask that that, the language of that condition be changed from freeway ramps to the nearest lane of travel. Secondly, another part of that D sixty-one is that, the condition is that the vegetative barrier should be maintained or enhanced. By my count of the proposed plans, eleven trees are being cut down between the roadway and some of the residences. That is not maintaining, that is not enhancing. In fact, the project that's in, within the staff report being asked to be approved does not show any maintenance or any enhancement of the vegetative barrier. In previous discussions with, that Steve Hanson mediated earlier, they stated that the city shall make sure that those conditions are followed through on. I would appreciate a layer of transparency with that to ensure that this actually does happen. So with those aside, I just want to take a step back and look at this from a larger view. And larger view is that I shouldn't be here. This is discussions that the Planning Commission should have had with SAC Metro Air District and the applicant. It should not require a resident to fork over three hundred dollars to force an appeal before the city government for there to be a discussion about air quality. You can go and speak with SAC Metro Air District and find out what are the impacts we're talking causing asthma, cardiovascular disease, preterm birth, and early mortality. We're talking about the health of our residents. And let me remind, the mission actually of the city is to protect, preserve, and enhance the quality of life for present and future generations. Secondly, another thing that the staff brought up is that...
I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up and just to say, I think it's a reasonable amount of time.
One other thing I want to get to is that the staff said that this plan is consistent with the general plan. Within the general plan, under a goal PHS 3.1, it actually says that the city shall reduce exposure to hazardous materials and waste, protect and maintain the safety of residents, business, et cetera, et cetera. So the plan right here is not consistent with the general plan and it does not fulfill the mission of the city. And so in closing, what, if we look at other communities around the state, LA, just this week, LA, the poster child of dense infill, and I'm all for dense infill, LA, which is the poster child of dense infill, has turned down a project of fifteen homes next to a roadway. LA turned down, they denied the project to go through. Why is this different? Why was there no discussion about air quality at, during any of the project development of their...
Point has been well made and detailed. I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Hanson. Project applicant, thank you. One representative of the project applicant, okay? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. My name's Marty Carr and I work for Michael Moser Development. We're the project applicant. I think I can keep it pretty brief if I just speak directly to the issues raised by the appellant. In terms of the flooding question, this is an issue that's been reviewed by SAFCA. They've expressed no concerns with the project. It's certainly true that Santa Buena Street has trouble with water. I think it's true, she used the phrase, "The water bubbles up." I don't know that I'd go with the phrase, that there's flooding, but it certainly has water that bubbles up and that comes across that roadway. The real question I think that I would ask is, you know, how does that connect to our project? How does that connect to the project that we're asking to approve tonight? And Ms. Devine gave, I think what she thinks is the best answer she's got, which is she thinks that our project replaces a sponge with a brick. And I know she's sincere about this. She's told me that she has self-evacuated from Land Park twice. She takes these flood issues very, very seriously. But I wonder if she's read the conditions on the project. Condition D nineteen says that we've got to provide onsite detention, right? What's there right now in that neighborhood is not up to city standard. Our project is required to meet city standard, including providing onsite detention. We're going to be the most flood-sensitive piece of that neighborhood when this project gets approved and I certainly hope you will approve our project tonight. I think that's, that addresses the flood issues.
About the air quality issue, briefly.
Absolutely. The air quality issues. In terms of the health risk assessment, our project's being subjected to the same conditions as projects with the worst health risk assessments that have gone on in the city. City staff actually knows a lot about this issue and works with SAC Metro a great deal. You're certainly familiar with a number of freeway-adjacent projects that have been approved recently in this community. I think maybe the most well-known is McKinley Village. McKinley Village has homes that are three times closer to the sound wall than the Swanston Oaks homes are going to be, nearly twice as dense as our project. And city staff and the applicant, working with air quality management, figured out how to get it done. I absolutely would not object. Appellant, Jeremy, forgive me, I forget your last name, requested a change in the language to condition D sixty-one. And if I heard the request to change properly, he'd like the first line to read, "Maintain and enhance existing vegetative barriers between the nearest lane of travel and the residential units." And if that's the request from the appellant, I don't know your process for adopting the amendment, but we wouldn't object.
It'll be up to the council to decide how and if to move, if and how to move a resolution, but you're agreeing with the appellant's request there can be taken into consideration by Councilmember Hanson or any other member of the council. That's good.
Absolutely.
Okay, so you agree with his request?
I agree with that request as I read it out, absolutely.
Good. Thank you, sir. Anything else?
With that, I would ask you to move this to a vote and to please approve our project.
Okay. Thank you very much. I think the issue is, at least for this one member, clear in terms of... But now we're gonna turn it over to the council member who knows more about it than any of us. So here we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be brief. We sit here essentially de novo. We are not allowed to take into consideration necessarily the actions before at the Planning Commissioner by staff, but to keep an open mind. And as you heard, I did facilitate a mediation where I fastidiously kept my opinions to myself and encouraged them to communicate and ultimately, while I think there was a good effort and good intentions, ultimately a compromise was not reached or some solution was not reached. I think also one of the challenges in, Jeremy, Mr. Herbert said this, the appellant, we have over the course of years pushed down decisions to the lowest level of staff. And so sometimes I think we end up with these challenges, which are pretty unique, in front of us. I am a big proponent of infill and I know Mr. Moser and his team have done lots of different infill projects. The challenge here is that I think that as we, as I got into this, because I frankly hadn't been engaged in this project very much until I learned of the appeal, is I think that there are some important points that were made by the appellants. But I also think that, and I can walk through each of these, I think that this site is an unusual site. It is constrained both by the freeway and by the apartments to the north and it's fairly isolated. It's probably part of why the land hasn't been developed. A piece of the land was cut off when the freeway was built through there and so it really was, I think, a remnant parcel for a lot of different reasons. But much like we do on projects, our staff and I think even the commission want to be very customer-oriented and we are trying to do a lot of things to try to make this work. But I think in the end, through a variety of different reasons, we may have accepted too many changes. of different reasons, we may have accepted too many changes. And as we go through this, we're sitting essentially hearing this project for the first time, so we're not limited necessarily to the appeal. But I am slightly worried about us setting a policy of abandoning right-of-way as we're doing here. I don't think, in this case, that the-- the policy decision should have been made at the level it was made at, which is essentially at the staff level and then the Planning Commission, because that's a pretty important factor. The circulation and some of the deviations with lots, if I-- if I had seen this earlier and been able to gauge-- engage with the project proponent, I think we might have been able to work through it. But because I wasn't able to say my concerns about the project until tonight, because that would have potentially prejudiced the outcome, I-- we didn't get to have those conversations. But I frankly think that the design is also substandard compared to McKinley Village, as mentioned, is a very well-designed project. But also, even though the sound wall was closer, there was a huge buffer between the freeway, and that buffer-- and that wall, and that buffer was landscaped very particularly to remediate the particulate matter. We worked aggressively with the applicant on that project to make sure there was sufficient tree planting, conifers, other things to affect that. So, the long and short of it is, you know, I think Ms. Devine and Mr. Herbert raise important questions. I think that, as I look at this from-- with a new eye, and I'd invite the applicant to work with us on it, is I think that the project as it stands is not well-conceived, and I'd like to make a motion that we accept the appeal and deny the project, and ask them to reapply and work with me and our team to get a-- to get a better design. But I don't believe that we should support the abandonment of the right-of-way.
So, can I ask a clarifying question, Councilmember Hanson? You know, I-- my view, again, coming back after many years, is that, you know, I err on the side of the judgment of the council member, because your district, you studied it, you tried to mediate this. The only part of your motion that I do wonder about, however, is whether or not the appeal needs to be denied or simply delay the disposition of the appeal so that you can go back with as much time as you need to seek the redesigns and the different changes that you want. Because, starting from scratch and having to reapply, how many years is that going to take if the project, in fact, can't be fixed per your-- you know, to satisfy your-- the things that you have laid out that I'm willing to support? Why isn't that a-- why isn't that a fair thing to the applicant while at the same time maintaining the ability of the appellant's to have their say?
So, I did talk to staff about that, and I'd invite the city attorney, Mr. Heron, to address that question if you'd like. But I think ultimately, the cleanest way to do it would be to-- and that's based on those conversations--
With the lawyers. So, why can't, you know, Steve-- Mr. Hanson, first of all, I just want to make my question clear. Mr. Hanson stated, I think, clearly, and I agree with him, this is de novo. So, we're not limited just to the basis for the appeal. So, the council members properly said, "I have some issues with the design of the project, with the abandonment of the right-of-way." Are you going to tell us that the only way to essentially perfect those issues is to deny the appeal as opposed to delaying this proceeding for as long as he reasonably needs to have a chance to work this out?
It is correct, Mr. Mayor, that this is a de novo review, so it can extend to these additional issues brought up by Councilmember Hanson. We have a timing issue under the Subdivision MAP Act in which we don't necessarily have time to continue this too long for additional consideration if the--
How about with a waiver or an agreement of the-- of the project applicant?
That was going to be my next sentence.
Sorry.
Unless we get the-- the applicant is willing to waive the timelines under the Subdivision MAP Act and Permit Streamlining Act, then we would have some timing challenges on doing continuation for as long as it might take to resolve the issue.
What is the deadline now, without an extension?
I think it's coming up in the next couple of weeks, actually, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. So, Mr. Applicant, here, you got a, I suppose, a bit of a Hobson's choice. You take a risk on a vote here to deny the appeal, or you agree to an extension so that Councilmember Hanson can dive in and help to make the project better.
Now, can I speak to the issues that the council member raised?
Yeah, I think that's fair. Sure.
Okay. You know, we've been in front-- in front of the community for a couple of years on this project. That's--
First time before the council.
First time before the council, certainly. At community meetings, council members are aware of the project. I mean, we haven't sat and spent a long time with it, but, you know, nobody's-- nobody's been hiding the ball here, certainly.
No one's accusing you of doing--
Thanks very much.
Okay.
You know, I-- this is the first time anybody's raised concerns about the abandonment of the right-of-way. And I understand, Mr. Hanson properly, he's got concerns about circulation. I presume that means traffic circulation that arises from abandoning the right-of-way. And if that's the concern, that's when I think we can probably deal with right-of-way.
He also talked about design.
He did also talk about design. In terms of the right-of-way and circulation, every single community member who spoke about circulation in regards to this project had one comment. There was no other comment. The comment was, "Do not create a thoroughfare between Fourth Avenue and Swanston. Our project has a brick wall preventing that thoroughfare." So, in terms of circulation, with the abandonment of the easement, of the right-of-way, we provide exactly what the community members have asked for there. So, I don't think there's a circulation concern unless it's something that I simply don't understand. You know, in terms of, can we-- can we just delay? You know, where's the harm in that? The harm in that is that infill development is hard, right? There's a reason that thing has been a blighted spot in that neighborhood for ages. There's a reason that nobody has developed it to get rid of the hypodermic needles and the couches and the underwear. I don't know why people leave underwear without pants and shirts, but, you know, the things that you find on that site, because infill is hard. And if the city doesn't want to respect the policies it sets forth in its general plan and wants to make it even harder, spend even more time, presumably with the goal of causing us to spend even more money on redesign of a project that's been through a wringer.
Okay.
That's the harm.
So, I-- and I appreciate when you put a lot of time into something, you're passionate about it, and you could-- you have a right to be frustrated. I get it. However, my advice to you is that you take up an offer essentially from the council member to sit down with you. Councilmember Hanson, how much time do you think you would need to work through this?
I would sort of defer to our staff, but if they were willing to waive those timelines and that were doable, I honestly don't know. Working with the community development staff, probably less than a month.
Okay.
But--
So, well, why don't you give yourself a little bit more time? And I understand time is money, but hey, this is not perfect here. You want to maintain-- you don't want to start at the very beginning. We're trying to help you here in a way, okay? So, why don't we say, "Why, are you willing to sign an agreement to extend for two months beyond the couple of weeks that the Subdivision MAP Act or whatever it is says-- says ends the time?" If you're willing to do two months beyond that, which would take you to about three months, but I think Councilmember Hanson's saying he's willing to roll up his sleeves right now, maybe get it done within a month, you come back here and hopefully we've got-- we've got an answer. That's better than-- than taking the risk on a vote up here and a potential denial.
May I ask you to accept Councilmember Hanson's suggestion of one month beyond the allotted time?
I was just trying to be-- I just know government here a little bit, right? We all do. Go to, and they'll try to get it done in a month, okay? That's the-- that's good faith, right?
And we'll work in good faith to try to resolve those things.
Okay, quickly.
And so, so my agreement is an agreement to end up back in front of this body for an up or down?
Yes.
Well, I think officially, if we get to a deal and we can satisfy the appellant, they can withdraw their appeal, and we may not have to end up before this body again.
But I think what he's asking here is, we're not-- under no circumstances would we put you through the Planning Commission again. You get to come-- you get to come back here with a-- with a modified project. The appeal either stands or it doesn't stand.
Sure.
And if it does stand, then we vote up or down, correct? Okay? So, I know I've got other council members, but so the motion-- the proper motion would be to-- to-- to deny the-- to grant the appeal unless, within the next five days, the project applicant is willing to sign a waiver that would extend the time for two months beyond the end of the statutory timeline of the Subdivision MAP Act. That way, if you sign it, the appeal is not granted, and we then try to solve the problem.
And may I ask the city attorney to confirm for us when the expiration of the statutory period is? I want to be sure we're two months beyond a couple of weeks from now, not two months beyond some longer term.
Yeah, that's fair.
Well, I've been-- I've been informed that we have up to ninety days, but we obviously are looking to do that in a shorter timeframe.
What, we have up to-- oh, the--
You could possibly--
The MAP Act thing doesn't end for ninety days, you're saying?
Well, the maximum extension, we could-- the waiver and extension time that the applicant can have is ninety days, but--
No, but that's not what he's asking. When does the statutory period end? The current statutory period end?
Sixty days from the appeal, whenever that was some weeks back. So, there's another six weeks left or so on that time.
Okay, so, listen.
We've already got over a month. We'd do another--
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, don't quibble. He's going to get right on it. We're going to meet for the first time. You're going to get together and you're going to work on this, okay? And we're going to help. We're going to try and work out the issues.
Thanks so much.
Okay. Okay, so, we got a couple of council members. It's still two months--
They'll accept all of those amendments, yeah.
Okay, good. Councilman-- Councilman Harris?
Just a brief comment. You know, I support where Steve is going with this, that I think there are some issues with the project, that we-- it could be a better project all the way around. I don't think that the appellant's have sufficient grounds to actually perfect those appeals. And I would hate to uphold that in any way, because I think it sets a precedent in the city that's not a good one. But I like the direction you've taken, and I think it's a good compromise.
Good. Thank you so much, Councilman Harris. Councilmember Ashby?
Yeah, first, just clarification. The one piece I didn't understand was, are we-- did you say we're going to approve the appeal? Or-- because that part's the part I'm a little uncomfortable with.
It's conditional. We're approving the appeal unless the applicant signs a waiver within five business days. The waiver must be for the remaining period of the statutory-- the statute that the statute calls for, plus two months.
Mayor, I-- the part of that that I-- that is, that I'm struggling with is that I think what-- and maybe I'm wrong. It's not my clearest day, as you know.
That's okay.
But I think I heard staff say they have ninety days from--
No.
The--
That's not what they said. I'm sorry.
Okay, I think I heard--
Okay.
--staff say that there are ninety days from the sixty days that they got at the end of the appeal.
As a maximum.
As a maximum that we can give them on an extension.
Could.
I do-- I-- I am not hearing a problem with just doing that. I don't know why we would add the other layer on top. It's still-- the appeal still lives, and the proponent is still moving forward, and they would just have the-- whatever is the remainder of the sixty plus the ninety. So, we would basically be directing them to work with Councilmember Hanson at his discretion, but following the rules that I think I've heard the city attorney lay out.
No, the reason is, we're trying to give the applicant a little bit of assurance that it's going to be faster than six-- than six weeks plus ninety days. So, it's discretionary. We can move the timeline shorter. The poor guy out there asked for thirty days.
Yeah.
You know, I'm suggesting sixty. So, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to finesse here.
Mayor, can I just hear from our city attorney?
Go ahead.
Would that be okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just make sure I get my mind wrapped around this.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeffrey Heron from the city attorney's office, I'm the principal land use attorney. Let me help clarify the timelines a little bit. I apologize if the translation was a little wrong. Under the MAP Act, essentially, sixty days from the appeals, which were July third, so we're about a week away from that time period. The ninety-day outside time period we were talking about is a rule under the Permit Streamlining Act that allows you to extend, but no more than ninety days.
No more than.
So, we're about to run out of the sixty days in a week or so, and we could extend beyond that another ninety days pursuant to agreement.
Now, you're-- according to the city attorney, you've got six weeks on the original sixty days, is what--
He's wrong, because it was--
That was a-- that was a factual-- From July third, from the date of the appeal.
Okay, so even better for you. You got a little bit of time left, a couple of weeks left on the statutory sixty days, and then we're extending it another two months. That's the-- that's the motion.
It is darn near like Christmas. My only-- my only question is, we're going to have five days to sign an agreement. I know you don't like quibbling on the details. Will the city attorney's office prepare the waiver?
I-- yes.
Okay.
Of course.
And you don't have a problem with getting it to us in a time that we can meet our five-day deadline? Okay.
Five day-- okay, five days from when you receive it.
Thanks very much.
How about that? Okay?
Thanks very much.
Okay, Mayor, so just to finish--
No one's playing a game.
So, just to wrap that up, I think. Okay, so they have five days to sign something. That's the piece I'm still a little unclear on. But it doesn't matter, because they've indicated that they will sign it. And then they'll have the ninety days plus one week that I think they have remaining, and that will either come back to us or whatever.
Sixty days.
Okay.
Plus the one week.
Okay. No, it's-- okay, whatever. I don't care. So, but the main thing I wanted to say to you is that I think Steve Hanson's going to do a-- you're going to be able to do-- you're going to be able to achieve this, because he has done this before.
Yeah.
And I've worked on some projects with him on this, and I have also worked with this developer before, both of them. And they-- I believe that there will be a compromise in the mix there for you, and I think you guys can get that done. So, I appreciate giving that a little bit of a chance, and also being able to address, then, the concerns of your constituency. I believe you will find your way there.
I completely agree. Councilman Carr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a torturous way to do it. As I understand it, if you want to build development, you first got to get control of the property and make sure that the environmental on the property is suitable for what you want to do. Then you have to go to the planning department and with some specificity, explain to them what it is you're trying to do. And usually, at that point, they send you to the council member whose district this is in. Then you have to pay a lot of money to draw up some detailed specs, and then you have to go get permits. And then you have to go, if you satisfy all of those things, then you have to check off water, you have to check off schools, you have to check off sewer, a whole bunch of things on that checklist. And then you have to go to the neighborhood groups. And while you still have most things in pencil, you can make some adjustments based on the concerns of the neighbors. And then finally, you submit, and you go to the Planning Commission. And then the Planning Commission may put some conditions on you, and then you get your permit, or in this case, if it's appealed, it comes to the council. And then the council can redesign, at that point, the project. It's a cumbersome way to do it. We give great deference to the council member whose district this thing is in, because they supposedly have looked at this issue. But what I'm being asked to vote on is the appeal that was presented to me. It was insinuated there were a whole bunch of other issues. I don't know what those other issues are. And the appeal was generally on two things, one flooding and the other one, air quality. And they have been looked at by both of the districts that are involved. And the applicant has conceded that he would plant some trees along the freeway as opposed to the ramp to mitigate at least one concern. It's just a troubling thing. It seems like we have to find a mechanism to make this happen before now. This is not the place to be doing this. And the second thing that I really want to know is, what is this going to cost? If we delay sixty days, ninety days, whatever the right number of days is, what does that cost to the applicant? Say again?
About twenty-five thousand, he said. Okay.
You have that laying around?
No, but--
You have twenty-five thousand laying around? That's the thing. These things all cost, and we know we have a housing shortage. We know we need housing, all types of housing, as soon as possible. And if we continue to make it difficult-- And if we continue to make it difficult for people to build projects after they've already gone through a lengthy process, then we're shooting our own selves in the foot. And Steve, it sounds like you're talking about a complete redesign of the project.
Can I, can I respond, Mr. Mayor?
Of course. Tell them. Go ahead.
We, we work very carefully with applicants all the time. I think that we aspire to do infill. And do we always do it absolutely right? No. Do we have time to, to work with every project applicant? Not necessarily. But I think in good faith, we're going to resolve this in a way that is hopefully acceptable to the parties and I believe that. And so this is how the process is supposed to work. We hear this as, as if we've never heard it. That's the law. De novo means brand new. And, and that's our role here. We have pushed down all those other authorities, but ultimately, these are discretionary approvals and they rest on our judgment as a body. And so I think we're trying to serve the public, public's interests and the applicant's interests in, in developing a great project and I believe that we'll get there.
It's a dispute. And so, you know, how do you resolve a dispute? The applicant could have said...
The applicant's willing to work with you and it's your district and it's costing him $25,000 that you'll have to find a way to make him hold on. So if he's willing to do it, I'm willing, it just seems like it's a cumbersome way to...
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. The motion passes. Let's get to work and let's come back with a project that we can all support. Thank you so much, everybody. Let's now move on to file item 20.
When do we get anything built in this city?
Thank you.
How you doing, sir?
Good, sir. Councilmembers, Jeffrey Ross, Assistant Director of Development for the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. And this evening, I have the honor of presenting to you the Twin Rivers Transit-Oriented Development and Light Rail Station project. Over the last five years, SHRA, in partnership with the city, its departments, the county, and the neighborhood and its residents, have been working diligently to reimagine and to move towards a new development for the Twin Rivers community. And part of that effort is to reconnect it both physically, socially, and economically back to the surrounding fabric of the city. Twin Rivers has had its share of challenges, most of which having to do with isolation as the surrounding neighborhood has evolved over the last 70 years since its development. And so as we've gone through this planning process, we've, we've labored to work with everyone to make sure that we can address those issues and concerns. Since the mid-'90s, there has been a steady decline in the support for public housing. And as, as a result of that, the agency, working with the, the city and the county, worked to develop a asset repositioning strategy, of which for Twin Rivers was the ultimate conversion to asset management and to redevelopment of the site. Beginning in 2010, HUD replaced what was known as the HOPE-6 program with the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative. The key to that was, is the choice neighborhood looks not only at the housing like the HOPE-6 program previously had, but also looks more specifically at the families and the surrounding neighborhood. And so the, so in order to, to do that, the agency went after a planning grant in, in 2012 and was able to undertake a visioning process, which then in 2015, applied for and received one of five Choice Neighborhood implementation grants, of which was awarded of $30 million to, to act as seed money and catalyst money for the redevelopment of the Twin Rivers project. During the last five years, there's been a series of partnerships forged. Again, city as co-applicant and neighborhood lead, the county housing authority as, as the applicant and property owner, Urban Strategies, working as case manager for our residents, and McCormick Baron Salazar as the development partner. Looking at the neighborhood, we've worked very closely with the city as well as the River District and the residents to come up with a, a mix of opportunities to help with placemaking, various connections to include healthy foods, and to also address the impacts of homelessness in the River District. Some of the key projects that are actively underway already in the neighborhood include the planning for a new light rail station, as well as looking at 16th Street. The implementation funding for the 12th Street Complete Street has been secured and that project looks to begin next summer. And the city has, has already approved a new firehouse and the Powerhouse Science Center is continuing to work towards being able to launch their developments. On the people piece, we have worked diligently to look at health outcomes, economic self-sufficiency, education, community safety, to engage the residents and the community and civic leadership and to make sure that there is constant engagement and communication. Part of the program, the, the current Twin Rivers site consists of 218 housing units and those housing units are currently occupied. So there is a, a need for temporary relocation and part of that is governed under various rules of law and, and policy, both by the federal government and the state of California. Each family will have a guarantee of being issued a tenant protection voucher. They will be able to find a comparable and suitable living, you know, residence. They get to choose the location of, of their choice for that residence. They have a right to return back to the community. And we are making sure that through our partnership with Urban Strategies and Case Management, that we will be also engaging with a very experienced relocation team to make, to make sure that the various residents have the opportunity and all the information available to them. Again, the, the demolition that will need to occur for this project to begin is in two phases. The first phase is on the upper northwest portion, about two-thirds of the site, in red. And the final phase of demolition, which will occur most likely beginning 2018, would be on the lower southern portion, on the eastern side as well. The, the mix of housing that we're looking to put back onto the site is a full replacement of the 218 public housing, as well as bringing on additional affordable housing and market rate units. And the, the design will account for reconnecting the grid from downtown up to the River District and making sure that the development is as sustainable as possible going forward. So the actions before you tonight are, are three very specific requests. Staff is requesting for the council to approve the environmental for the project. Staff is then requesting for the funds identified for the project, for the current scope of activities to be expanded to allow for the full development range of implementation to be allowed. And the third component of tonight's actions are for the relocation plan to be adopted. At this point in time, I'd like to call up Youssef Freeman, our development partner from McCormick Baron Salazar, to quickly highlight a few of the key attributes of the project, at which, when he is completed, then we will, staff will be available, as well as our development partners, to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jeff. Hi, I'm Youssef Freeman, Managing Director of West Coast Operations with McCormick Baron Salazar. We are the housing lead for the implementation of the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative at Twin Rivers. Just to give you an update of how we're moving forward with the housing component of the, the redevelopment, the, the first two phases were approved by the, the planning commission last month. And we're looking to move forward with 170 units of mixed-income housing with those first two phases. And that's going to include 67 public housing replacement units for the residents who are still there, 63 additional affordable units, and 40 market rate units, to make sure that we have the full economic integration in those initial two phases. We're doing 61-bedroom units, 82-bedroom, 5-3, 23-garden, and 23-three-bedroom townhouses, and then two four-bedroom units for the, the larger family units. You can see from the, the current existing aerial that right now, Twin Rivers is isolated from the surrounding community. It has its own internal street grid that doesn't connect with the, the surrounding neighborhood. And we're looking forward to moving forward with a infrastructure package that re-nits that neighborhood with the surrounding community to further connect it to jobs and services in the neighborhood. So you can take a look here at our approved site plan and you can see now the additional connections to the surrounding neighborhood for the community. And those, those first boxes on the, on the top of your screen that are in red are the first two phases of the project. So here's a overview of Phase 1, which is the first block that'll move forward. That building to the, the left that has the, the number eight on it is, will have 42 units. It'll be principally one-bedroom units, but more importantly, on the first floor, will have the amenities for the community, which includes swimming pool, fitness center, community facilities, community lounge, as well as where the provision of community supportive services will take place. So that, that building eight will have basically two wings on the first floor, one specifically for intensive case management, job training, other community supportive services, and the other wing will be the more traditional amenities that you'll find in a lot of market rate communities around the city. It's, it's important to note that there is no physical difference between a public housing replacement unit, an affordable unit, or a market rate unit. Everything will be designed and developed to the market standard and each building will be fully integrated. So we're not going to isolate higher-income tenants from, from lower-income tenants from public housing tenants. This is a true mixed-income development that has full economic integration throughout the site. Here's a look at the aerial for Block B, the, the second phase, and you'll see a large, again, the number eight being your focal point, a large community park that will be designed with the Parks Department and through additional charrettes with the, the community to make sure that we have all of the activities that are, that are going to be wanted and needed in the community. It's also a significant part of the stormwater management for the entire site and so we'll be taking that into account as well with our, with our civil engineers. So here you can see a view of, of what it will look like. This is the corner of Richards and Dos Rios. You'll see we have the, the more dense building that has those amenities and computer, community supportive services that I initially mentioned, right there on the corner. And the rest of the units are principally in townhouse and garden-style apartments. And that concludes our presentation and will be available for questions.
Yes. I'm sorry. Were you, well, I'm sorry. I was just in my own thought for just a moment here. We do have two, we do have two members of the public who want to comment, then we'll turn it over to the councilmembers, of course. Go ahead.
I have one speaker slip from McWorthy.
People, I don't oppose housing, but somebody lying. Now, where are you going to relocate 280 residents and you ain't got no housing for the homeless? Somebody lying here. You know, let's, let's be realistic, common sense. Now, what we're doing, we're talking about $30 million. People, if you sit down and do the figuring, a 30-by-30 apartment should be no more than $10,000. Every million dollars should do 50 units. But where did this come from? And then you go back to block rents. People, it's pitiful. You have used, misused block rents for the last 60 years in this town. Job training, what are you going to train those people to do? You ain't got nothing here for them to do. You are building an internal welfare within the ghetto. Face it, that's what you're doing. About nothing. Those people cannot go out and get no job by just somebody training them in housing. Stevie sucks the same way. I know when GIs lived at Dos Rios. When North Sacramento was a city by itself and then there was hikes. But anyway, people, you got light rail and you need an environment impact and you got want a fire station. Is this going to come out of this $30 million? Light rail is mass transportation. And then what you got to do is classify SHRA. Is SHRA owned by you or is it an agency for this city? Make some clarification, people. You are pimping somebody or racketeering. That's the bottom line. Is it an agency or do you own it? If you own it, it's not an agency. If it's an agency, it should be somebody from the public on that board. How many people now work? We want an audit on the finance before you do this. Give us an audit on the finance now, how it's dispersed. And it, it'd be pitiful. You need to employ some of these people...
Mr. Worthy, your time is up.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Next.
You enjoy saying your time is up, but you better get something started here because we, we, me and Donald Trump ain't playing. We're going to drain the swamp and these are the type of things that we're talking about.
Very good. Have a nice, have a nice evening. Okay, Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. First, you know, I want to make it clear that this is in the River District and that's in District 3. Getting this Choice Neighborhoods Initiative grant was no easy feat and I want to thank at SHRA, LaChelle, and all of the staff because this was a really hard thing to do. I, I went with them when HU D members came out for a tour of the River District and listened to their concerns and, and what really sold this project was what they perceived as a deep collaboration between the housing authority of the county and the city. And SHRA's hard work on meeting all the goals and objectives of the CNI grant and they pulled it off. So we got a $30 million windfall. And believe me, that took a lot of work from many people over several years to make that happen. This project would be truly transformative to the River District in a lot of ways. You heard Youssef say that this is full economic integration, which is so much different than a public project. I mean, that alone is, is a tremendous benefit of this project. There's an awful lot that's great about this thing. I wanted to say hello to Youssef and Lauren. I went down to San Francisco to look at the work of McCormick Baron Salazar with a bunch of folks from SHRA and I was duly impressed. Was it Alice Griffith? Was that the name of the project down there? And the transformation of, of Alice Griffith and what McCormick Baron had built was truly remarkable. It's a different way of life, a different culture, just a better way to envision a city. And to be able to do that in the River District is a very exciting prospect indeed. So I'm pretty happy about this project in a lot of ways and there are time constraints and I can tell you the difficulty of pulling together tax credits and cap and trade funds to make something like this fly is enormously complex. I spent a whole day talking about it and I felt like 100% neophyte and had actually not much more of a clue at the end of that train ride than when I began it. So I get the complexity of, of getting this thing out of the dirt. There are a couple of things I'd like to ask questions about and admittedly, there are a couple of things that are a little disappointing about this project. And one is that I would like to see more density. And as we've talked about this project over the last couple of years, the number has been creeping downward and downward. When last we spoke, it looked like it was going to be 510 units and yet in this staff report, it's at 499. Actually, I read the staff report pretty carefully and at one point, it's 499 and another point is 510. So, so Jeffrey, can you tell me what's, what's going on there?
Yes, so the, the environmental approvals that we have for the project allow for a maximum of 510 units. The current entitlements for the current onsite of Twin Rivers, it does not account for Site F, the triangle that is between 16th, 12th, Richards. That, with those entitlements not secured at this point, we are at 499 or less in terms of the unit count for entitlements. So that a lot, that is the difference right now between the maximum allowed under the environmental and the current entitlement, a maximum allowable.
When you develop the triangle, could, could...
So that is the difference right now between the maximum allowed under the environmental and the current entitlement, a maximum allowable.
When you develop the triangle, could that count go up, then?
Yes. We will have to return at a later date to get the entitlements for the remaining portion of the project, and at that point in time, the entitlements would most likely match the current environmental allowed.
So I appreciate that. That's a good clarification. The other thing is about the trees onsite. So when we walk the site, you know, there are a lot of protected trees on there, a lot of big London Plains, some Modesto Ash, some trees in good shape, some trees in very poor shape. But as I look at the plan, it looks like you really intend to scrape the area and remove all trees, protected or no. And as a result, you'll be forced, per our tree ordinance that we adopted over a year ago, to do mitigation for those trees. So if I got my numbers right, 130 trees will be removed, 93 are protected. You'll have to do a mitigation of 865 diameter inches and also pay a mitigation fee of a quarter million dollars, roughly. So that's a lot. That's a big burden, but I would like to know why you felt that it was compulsory to remove all of the trees, including the protected trees.
So the difference in the grading of the site from 12th Street to Dos Rios, there's a substantial change in elevation. And so as part of the flood mitigation measures, infrastructure upgrades, and the improvements that correspond to the site, we actually had to lift the site up a couple of feet in a large portion of the current.
So you have to bring in a tremendous amount of fill?
We had to bring in a tremendous amount of fill.
And this is really about stormwater runoff, not flood protection?
Stormwater runoff, yes.
Okay.
And when we raised the site up, putting that much dirt over the trees.
That would kill them.
It would kill them. That is why they're there.
Well, I know that that was a tough deal to work out with the Department of Utilities to work with the stormwater runoff. You had basically two choices, to rebuild the combined sewer system in the area or figure out a way to deal with the stormwater runoff in a detention basin park, basically. So I wanted to make that clarification in case my colleagues had any questions. Listen, this is a great project, and I've been a supporter from the beginning, and I want to see this thing through to completion. So I would like to make a motion for all of the staff recommendations, the resolutions, and the plans approval as well. Last thing I want to say is, I know how hard you've worked on the relocation plan, and the great thing about this is that the people who live at the old Dos Rios project are pretty excited about this project, and they have accepted the idea of relocation, and they're very excited to move back to brand-new Twin Rivers development. And I say, let's move it forward.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wholeheartedly would third or fourth it or whatever point I'm at here. I want to first thank Councilmember Harris for his work on this, and there's a couple of reasons why, but the agency staff and the development team have been at this for a long time. This site was identified a very long time ago because of its deficiencies, and those deficiencies have somewhat been touched on in the presentation, but I feel a strong need to call out a few of those things, because I think what we're doing here is we're rectifying past discrimination and past segregation through some of these changes. And unless we really call it out, I don't think we can appreciate just how much this is going to change people's lives, but also the city. This part of the city is industrial. We all know that. So why, in the 1940s, was a community plunked down in the middle of it? Why is the school district boundary, just on that side, it's Twin Rivers; on the other side, it's Sac City? Why has this project and these folks been left sort of isolated, and I think the development team called that out? Not only the geographic barriers of the railroad tracks, 12th, Sixteenth are like urban highways, no connections really to transit that are easy at least, and no walkability. The city is engaged in trying to tear down some of those barriers. Our 12th Street Complete Street Plan, which is in some NEPA/SEQA purgatory right now, but it's coming. We are also working on 16th Street and more in the preliminary phases there. But ultimately, righting this wrong, it's a similar conversation that we've been having at Marina Vista Alder Grove, where there, the barriers are literally a freeway and some walls and a cemetery. But the differences in outcomes between the neighborhood that's adjacent and the public housing residents are so dramatic that it might as well be industrial, because the outcomes of these particular folks are in the top 1% in the state of disparity. And I think that if we do this as well as it looks like we're going to do it, it's going to not only be a testament to tearing down the history of segregation that led to this to happen, de facto or otherwise, but also it'll leave a legacy of great units in the public trust that are integrated into a mixed-income community, look no different than any else. I know there have been questions about the relocation plan. I think you addressed those pretty well. And the buy-in of the residents are key in that, as we all look to make sure that they're being treated fairly. I think that I feel very confident, knowing where we're going, that we can all say they're being treated fairly, their right of return is guaranteed, their access to a unit is guaranteed, and ultimately, the efforts to place them into communities that they want to go to may mean that they choose to stay in those communities, and that's their choice. But ultimately, Choice Neighborhoods is about giving people who otherwise don't always have a choice, the choice about how they can live their lives, how they can raise their families, and this is dramatic. I live not far from here, and I know those disparities. I know some of those folks, and I believe that as we look to build the central city, Mr. Mayor, with the rail yards and the River District, this will be one of the foundation stones, just like the rail yards development or Township Nine, in smart growth, better air quality, lower VMT, and it meets all of those tests. So we rarely get a project that allows us to right historic wrongs while still meeting our goals and striving together. This is it. So Councilmember Harris, congratulations. Our staff, congratulations. This is a home run.
Very well said. Thank you. Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I just wanted to thank the staff and the developer. I think this project is well thought out. I know it was a competitive process as well, and the fact that Sacramento was awarded the grant that allows this to happen, I think, is a big testament to the work that you guys have both done, as well as our councilman, Mr. Harris. And so, you know, I mean, infield development is challenging, as you saw from the previous project, and so we're really pleased. I think we need this kind of work and a lot more of it. So I'd just say, keep your antennas up. Let's find some more projects to work on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just a final comment. Can't say it any better than the council members said it, and thank you, Councilmember Harris, specifically for your leadership in your district on this outstanding, and to the SHRA team led by LaChelle. Fantastic work. For me, it is noteworthy that no one from the project is here in a positive way, because I know the number of community meetings that you have had, the way you have approached this relocation issue, which is very sensitive, and the fact that you have essentially answered every question that would reasonably be answered. Do the tenants have the right to come back? Yes. Are they going to be relocated to a comparable-quality apartment or home in the interim? Yes. Can they be asked to leave even with the demolition before they are found a comparable place? The answer's no. And so the sensitivity by which you have approached this is appropriate, and...
We do have a resident, a resident caretaker.
He didn't testify. I'm sorry. There is a resident for the...
Happened to him.
Okay. Well, very good. I just didn't see you there. Of course, take two minutes, but I...
Thank you, Mayor Steinbrenner.
Please, yes.
Councilman. I came in late, I'm sorry. But this is a great project for us residents. I've been there like 26, 27 years. I've seen the patchwork done. I've been woken up while I was going to school at 2:00 in the morning, when I was supposed to get up at 5:00 in the morning, for the patchwork that's going to this project, and thanks McCormick Baron Salazar and the team, Urban Strategies, because we're going to make this happen, we're going to get people employed. It's not for people that's looking to stay on the bottom. It's for people that's looking to move up in life. I mean, we're moving up as far as making it more employable, the groundbreaking for the rises in the land, so we'll have a good runoff, no flooding, and then we're going to have better housing. And that's the key, is a better housing. I've been working as a caretaker for many years, and I've seen a lot of tops and bottoms working there as far as flooding in laundry rooms, parts of the neighborhood just getting water flooded, electricity going out, fires, electrical fires, stove fires, but now all that's going to change. And I'm happy that the change is coming and coming soon, and I'm glad I'm going to be a part of the change when it's done.
Very, very well said. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you.
I stand corrected. One of the members of the Residence Council did come, but still, without controversy and in support. Last word, Councilman Harris.
Howard, I'd just like to thank you and Deco for being such great ambassadors for Twin Rivers. You guys have really been at the forefront, right from the first application for CNI. And I know you really love your place, and it's going to be a really new day for all of you from the old Dos Rios.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstained, passes nine to nothing unanimous. Congratulations. Big deal. That's worth an applause. Okay. Can we move through the next item quickly, please? Item 21, the abandonment of 3749th Avenue. Do we have public testimony on this? We do not. Jay has a question on it. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Seligah Inigas with Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. I'll make this brief. The item before you is to take actions regarding the neighborhood stabilization program. One is to allocate funds for the last remaining project on 9th Avenue. The funds are needed to remediate both, to demolish the building and to remediate lead that's in the building and lead that is in the soil as well. The other component is to close out the neighborhood stabilization program, that is NSP. There is actually two programs, NSP One, which we received funding in 2010, NSP Three, we received funding in 2011. Both of these awards, the objective was to transform previously vacant and foreclosed properties into ownership and rental opportunities. So the actions for the closing out of the NSP are to transfer remaining program income funds to CDBG, as well as any future program income funds to CDBG as well. This is allowed within the program guidelines. And then, of course, to process all that necessary paperwork with HUD. In closing, I'd just like to highlight sort of the accomplishment of what we were able to do with the more than $20 million in neighborhood stabilization funds. We were able to revitalize and put back into ownership and rental opportunities 170 properties in the city of Sacramento. So with that, that concludes my presentation, and Jeff and I are here for any questions.
Very good. Thank you very much. Councilman Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. So just a quick question, I think. So I understand the demolition, that's about $80,000. Program overall is to create ownership, and you'll have about $116,000 left over, which is getting transferred to CDBG.
Correct.
So my question is, why would we not? So what we're doing is we're taking a lot with a house, which clearly needs to be demolished. I'm not questioning that at all, but why? And then we're leaving another vacant lot in the neighborhood. Why would we not use that $116,000 towards putting a house on that lot?
So what we will do is, earlier, let's see, last year, we had the vacant lot disposition strategy. And so we had an initial phase where we're moving forward with vacant lots, both in Oak Park and Del Paso Heights. We have some properties vacant, single-family properties, that needed remediation or approvals from HUD. And so when we release that request for proposals for development of single-family, we will include this parcel in that, so that we can have a single-family home.
So that you can have, but we're not using funds that were designed for building homes to build this home. We're creating a vacant lot.
In the future, we could, we would, just like with the current disposition, we don't need any funds to subsidize the development. So we could use the funds if it's necessary, if the developer, when we release the request for proposals, that there is a subsidy requested, we could use these...
We don't have a developer yet on this.
Correct.
Part of the recommendation for Block Grant is, since NSP is now winding down nationally, HUD has given us the direction to move it into the Block Grant program.
I get all that.
Which also is more flexible in its ultimate use than the current NSP constraint, so that it would allow us to do, to still assist with either a new house or any other additional needs for...
Is there any reason why we could not use $116,000 towards a new house on this lot, which we're creating a vacant lot on?
There is no reason why we could not, no.
And was that considered?
Absolutely. And...
Why was it turned down, then?
The staff recommendation is based off of that if the need for funding to create a house, that the funding would still, would have maximum flexibility and able to be able to do that. So we were just trying to move the funds to a more flexible source and ultimately wind down the NSP. That was the recommendation. It wasn't to not have funds available to support this property or any others that would still need development.
So these funds will go into CDBG, and to be used for what?
That would come back before the council in a future action, so there is no identified use for them at this point in time. It would go into a future action plan where they would be specifically called out, and then the recommended use would then be also identified.
It's your pleasure, Councilman Chenier.
I don't like creating another vacant lot. I understand we're taking down a building that needs to be taken down that has severe problems. LaChelle, do you want to address this?
What I hear you saying is, how can we expedite going from a vacant lot to getting a house?
Using funds that were designed to do that.
Using the funds. And what our experience is showing is that we are able to attract developers who want to build these houses onto those vacant lots for far less than the $116,000. So we will probably be able to get the developer who'll come in, be able to put a house and really contribute far less than $116,000 for them to build a house on the lot. So I think we're talking the same thing as a matter of just how we get there.
Well, and timing.
Correct.
Going to take a lot longer.
Would you like to report back?
I've got one other thing, I'm sorry.
And from the...
Go ahead.
From the timing perspective, HUD is saying, "Close out this program," and this is the way you close it out. So we're merely attempting to get that piece done and then incorporate it into that RFP, as you're aware, because we're doing one already, and do that so that we can get these houses built.
And we have other vacant lots in the disposition that we're currently working on.
Yes, absolutely.
So I would move the recommendation by designating the $116,000 that's left over towards subsidizing housing on the vacant lots in the disposition.
Okay. So just to make sure that I'm clear, is that we set aside the $116,000 in the event that it is necessary to help spur the development of those houses on the single-family lots. Is that correct?
Yes, vacant lot.
Including this one? Yes, I understand.
Or at least we know we're keeping it specifically in the neighborhood for housing, and maybe we get rid of three vacant lots this way.
Okay.
Okay? So that would be my motion.
That's good. Moved and seconded. Any lengthy debate on the motion, okay? It's important.
It's not a long time.
No, I wasn't suggesting that. I was just asking whether anybody else. No, that's the right thing. I mean, we can't have more abandoned properties here, you know what I mean, vacant lots. Okay. Alan?
Just wanted to, and I'm going to support Jay's recommendation, but I just wanted to just state for the record that in the market that we're in right now, any vacant lot that's made available in the city of Sacramento is going to be highly attractive, so there should not be any need, unless we are targeting some deep affordability. So, I mean, if it's attracting a developer to come in and build on a vacant lot, we're going to have people, I think, readily available to do that. But if, Jay, if your intention is to, you know... But if, Jay, if your intention is to, you know, make this lot more affordable, then I think that the funds, if they can be used for that, could help accomplish that goal.
And I think, we have, we still have lots in District 2 that are on the disposition list as well.
Same thing, same thing.
You know, I'm fine using them either way. It doesn't have to necessarily be in Oak Park, it can be Del Paso, but I think we can stretch that 116,000 as much as we can, to move those lots as quickly as we can, to take advantage of the market and get houses built.
Yeah, either way, I mean, I'm fine with, I just wanted to make sure we note that, you know, this market does not necessitate a subsidy for, to attract developers to build market-rate housing. But if our goal is to get to a deeper affordability, then if these funds can be used for that, then we should, I think Jay's recommendation is a good one, and a good source of funds for it, so.
Oh, just one final question, is how quickly do you think we could get those lots? They're on the market now? I can't rea, I know we've talked about this, and I appreciate what you guys are doing. I think the disposition is important.
The lots that are in Del Paso Heights and Oak Park?
Right.
We are coming before you, I believe, in September?
And this new lot will be included, then, in that disposition?
No, that's just to cover the current vacant lots.
How do we get this new lot that we're creating into that September?
There's another tranche of vacant lots, and it'll come in that next group.
And?
Is it timing?
Need housing?
Back to you, because there are some restrictions that are still headlots that we need to get back.
On the mic.
Okay. Okay. If we could, and Allison is in the back there, if we could let Allison know.
My apologies. So there are some that need HUD declarations that need to be removed, and so, those are in process. And as soon as we know, we can, we'll certainly forward that information to you, and when we come back in September, we can have an update on all of, all of the vacant lots.
And does a vacant lot that we're creating have that challenge?
No, it does not.
For that one, is there any reason we can't do that in September?
We can take a look at it, yes, for September.
Okay. Okay. It's, is the motion clear? Jay, you're clearing the motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Moved and seconded, everybody is clear. Put that 116,000 to good use for these vacant parcels, please. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained, that passes. Thank you very much. Very good. Our new arts director, Nicholas here, welcome to the City Council.
Thank you, sir. Happy to be here.
Hope you enjoyed this long evening of civic democracy in action?
If I could?
Yeah.
After sitting here for a few hours and listening to your conversation, I am so pleased to be back in a place of rigorous public dialogue about these issues. I'm delighted to be back in California.
Thank you. That's great. Welcome. Introduce yourself, please.
So I am Jonathan Glass. I am the Cultural Services and Creative Economy Manager, Week 3. Excuse me. For those of you who I have not had the opportunity to sit down and spend some time with yet, I'm eager to do so, and look forward to it. I'm here this evening to give you a brief update on the cultural plan, and very importantly, to ask a colleague from Washington to give you a few minutes on the Arts and Economic Impact Study that we've recently released here in Sacramento, part of a national study. Before I introduce Randy, Randy Cohen, I want to recognize Rebecca Garrison, Arts Commissioner, who's here this evening. Rebecca, thank you for everything you're doing for us. And Jody Ulrich, and Danny Mengers, for all of their leadership on the cultural plan as well. The, many of you know that the cultural plan was approved by this body a number of months ago. The consulting committee, or excuse me, the consulting firm is the Cultural Planning Group, based here in California. AECOM, which is a Sacramento-based consulting firm, is subcontracting to help us with community outreach. Couple important things for your offices. We will be working with your staff to make sure that there is a community meeting in every one of your council districts over the next few months. Excuse me. And there will be a few meetings in, in the county outside of the city of Sacramento as well. The Steering Committee is going to be confirmed in the next, the next few weeks. Dan Bruner and Stacy Schelnett Hedrick are the co-chairs. I'm sure you're familiar with both of them. If not, Mr. Bruner is a longtime civic leader and arts patron. Stacy is the Arts Education Director at the Crocker, and quite active in the community. So they'll be a great team. Excuse me. The consulting firm will be here in September for four days. We will have a town hall meeting on Monday night, the 18th. And then, we will kick off with a number of meetings in your districts, as well as, excuse me, with business leadership, arts education leadership, economic development leadership, et cetera. So that's the update on the cultural plan. In the meantime, I'd like to turn it over to Randy Cohen, from Americans for the Arts, to give us a brief on the economic impact of the arts study.
We're gonna go this, go through this fairly quickly, if that's okay?
Yes, yes, sir.
Because we have a major marijuana cultivation item, and then another item. So I love the arts, as you know. Come on up.
It's all good news.
Good. Okay.
Thank you, Jonathan. Well, thank you so much for having me. It's great to be with you this evening. And it is a good news story that we have to tell, and kind of an unexpected story that we have to tell. The economic benefits of the arts. When you invest in the arts, obviously, you're improving our quality of life, you're creating the communities that we want to live in, that we want to work in. But the fact is, arts are businesses, they're industries, and we've got research to demonstrate that. Sacramento County was one of 341 communities nationally, as a part of a study to look at the economic impact of nonprofit arts and culture organizations and their audiences. Let me tell you, we take a very conservative approach to economic impact. We surveyed 206 organizations in the county, we heard back from 110, that's what we go with. We can put our hands all over every dollar that I'm about to talk about. So what did we find out, looking at the organizations and their audiences? Nonprofit arts industry, $166.7 million industry, right here in Sacramento. Oops, that doesn't look right. Well, okay, well, I'm just gonna give you the numbers, because I know the numbers. That figure is composed of two numbers. $82.3 million is spending by the arts organizations themselves. That's a mythbuster to folks, right? We love the arts, but they're businesses. They employ people locally, they purchase goods and services in the community, they work with a Chamber of Commerce, they do marketing and tourism of the region. Arts organizations are good business citizens. But that leverages additional event-related spending by their audiences. Think of the last time you went to an arts event. Well, maybe you had dinner first, and paid for parking, and, you know, gone out for dessert or drinks afterwards, paid for babysitting, lots of economic activity. We did 991 Audience Intercept surveys, a representative sample, to find out, how much do people spend related to these arts events that they took place? The typical attendee spends $26.36 per person, per event, not including the cost of admission. You add all that up, that right piece of the pie, the red pie, is $84.4 million. That's where we get $166.7 million. What's the economic impact of that? Well, jobs and government revenue, I'll tell you, we worked with a team of economists from Georgia Tech School of Economics, who customized an economic model right here for Sacramento. These are very localized data. Jobs, 5,888 jobs supported across the community. Arts organizations employ more than musicians, actors, performers. They also employ accountants, and auditors, and, you know, engineers, and electricians, and plumbers. They support jobs and industries throughout the community. So this is a jobs industry, it's not a frill as well. And, well, you know, what it says is, arts, not just food for the soul, but putting food on the table for 5,888 households, right here in the county. Government revenue, that's a big piece, right? When you make that investment in the arts, you're also bringing in revenue. $19.9 million in local and state government revenue. Small investment, big return. So the county, the city, everyone in this community, private sector, getting a big bang for the buck. Let me just tell you another piece about how this is driving tourism. Those 110 responding organizations had a total of 3.2 million attendees. We did our surveys, and I can tell you, 19% of those folks, one out of five attendees, comes from outside Sacramento County. They're a spend $32.92 per person. So the arts are bringing people into the community, and we asked those non-local attendees, why are you here? You're here on business, you're here visiting friends and family. 63% of those folks said, we came specifically for this arts event. So you see the pulling power of the arts. But you know what? We also have to watch what's at risk here as well, and I'm gonna talk about that slide in a second. And that is, because we asked the local attendees, well, what if this arts event that you're attending wasn't taking place? Which have stayed home, done something else? 48% said, we traveled to a different community to attend a similar kind of arts event. So you see, when we invest in the arts, we're investing in an industry, draws people to the community, and keeps our neighbors and their discretionary dollars right here in town. If you look to the back of the pamphlet in this study, and you all have these in your packets, you're gonna see a bunch of logos of national organizations. These national organizations are partners on this research study as well. The U.S. Conference of Mayors, the League of Cities. On the business side, you got the Conference Board, the Destination, the Tourism People, Destinations International. These organizations are partners, because they too believe the arts are fundamental component of a healthy community, and they buy into the methodology, and they buy into the results. You can feel very confident about these data. The takeaway here is, when we support the arts, we're not doing so at the expense of economic development, we're not investing in a frill, we're investing in an industry, a $166.7 million industry that supports 5,888 jobs, and generates $19.9 million in local and state government revenue. The arts mean business. Thank you.
Great, great, great presentation. Councilman Hanson, then I want to make a comment. Go ahead. Yeah?
All right. Are we talking about the cultural plan too, or just this?
Just this.
No, just this. We're not talking, we're not diving into the cultural plan tonight.
All right. I thought you said that when you opened.
He mentioned it as something that is...
Got it. Thank you. I should pay better attention, Mr. Mayor.
That's okay.
So, first of all, do please provide some of the data to us, because we haven't, we didn't get the backup for this. As we look at it, though, this was done before the Golden One Center opened, so there may be a bump there from concerts and other arts events. But also, as we look to redo our theaters, the two theaters and the convention center, we may see some benefit there. So I just want to make sure, as we look forward, we understand that. But one of the questions that we're mulling over right now is what to do around the Powerhouse Science Center, which is a science center mostly serving kids and families. Would that be counted as a cultural organization in this type of study?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. And then, just the last thing, is there any way to break out, because we've, we've struggled, frankly, and this is a good tieback to the discussion we had around Twin Rivers, supporting our diverse arts organizations, because they don't always have the same firepower in this chamber as other groups have? Is there a way to break out the spending or the support for those groups to help show what that gap is?
That's part of the reason why we actually survey every individual institution. We have that raw data. So my staff can actually reconfigure that, if you're interested in zip code or culturally specific organizations, we can do it.
I would, partially because we've, we've asked people before us to reach into communities of color, underserved communities, not necessarily the central city alone, or for bigger events. Bring, you know, we've brought underserved communities to the Community Center Theater for the ballet, when they wouldn't have had that chance otherwise. I just think we need to, and we owe it to our communities, to really try to tackle that question of the gap between what we're doing for organizations that some might call more traditional, and some of our diverse organizations, organizations that are focused on ethnic traditions, like Folklorico, which is a dance company, or some of our African-American groups, but even LGBT groups, to see if the data tells us anything.
Yes. Let me tell you why that's also in our strategic interest to do that as well. Because we talked about, very briefly, arts and culture helping to drive tourism. If you look at the research, travelers these days, domestic, international, are looking for authentic cultural experiences. When they come to a community, they want to know about the local, you know, the diverse organizations, the neighborhood-specific, the culturally-specific organizations. These folks, travelers, are interested in the whole spectrum of, or these types of organizations. And so, you know, what this, you know, the research is really clear. You don't want to just invest like in a couple of majors. You need your small, your emerging, your culturally-specific organizations, because that's actually part of the draw as well for tourists.
Councilman, if I can add to that, I cannot speak to the way that the, that the information was gathered here a year ago, but I can tell you that I've worked on three of these studies in the past, and we're very, very, very sure that we get out into every council district, and that we're at festivals, Saturday Neighborhood Association groups. I mean, we do the whole gamut, not just big events. And in fact, that's one of the criteria from Americans for the Arts, is that it isn't just the big events.
Okay. I just want to make a brief comment. First of all, to thank you, to welcome you again, Jonathan. And this might be sort of a counterintuitive point, but it's something I've sort of realized in my, you know, after eight months here. I think there comes a time in a, in a cause, and the arts, I think, are a cause, where the truth becomes so evident that you don't have to keep proving it. Really, I mean, that arts are an economic boon. You're right. Your data is, your underlying data, no doubt, is compelling, but you know what? We're playing doing it in this community, it's just happening. And the economic impact is already being seen. Look at the mural project. Look at the traffic that it is, the foot traffic, and the people coming in from, from outside of Sacramento to look at the murals. And look at, what, where they eating dinner? You know? Look at $500,000 for arts, culture, tech, food dreamers in our city. We get 481 applications, $7.2 million worth of application?
Amazing.
Case, you know, case closed. I, it almost is like, and this is not, take this in the right way. It's almost like, we don't, you don't have to be in a crouched defensive position, having to prove your case. It's proven. And what's happening in this community here, in the way arts and, the art scene has just lightened up the entire city? This is great stuff. The, and the economic side of it is self-evident. So, give us more data, please.
We've got more data.
We'll keep bringing it.
Okay. Thanks a lot, guys. Thanks a lot.
Let me just say briefly, if I may, I've led the local arts agencies nationally for 40, there's 4,500 of them across the country. And I can tell you, you've got the dream team here now with Jody and Jonathan, fabulous arts leadership, and I think there's really, really exciting things to happen here.
School, schools, schools.
Arts education, huge issue.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks a lot, you guys. Thanks. Thanks, Danny, and Jody. Appreciate it. Okay. Appreciate the patience of our men and women of the fire service here. We get to a very important item. It's file item 23. Chief White.
Mayor Steinberg, members of council, I feel both fortunate and excited to present to you a partnership, a labor management partnership with the California Joint Apprentice Committee, Sacramento Area Local 522, and the Sacramento Fire Department. This partnership provides us two really big benefits. One, it helps broaden our pool of qualified candidates to draw from, primarily because it allows us to take an active role in developing them. And second, it provides an opportunity for many who might not otherwise have to enter into the fire service by getting the benefit of training to make them qualified. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Yvonne De La Peña, with the California Joint Apprentice Committee, to describe the program to you.
Very good.
Good evening, I'm Yvonne De La Peña, and I'm the Executive Director of the California Firefighter Joint Apprenticeship Committee. And we handed out packets that have this information in there. But the CalJack Academy is a pre-apprenticeship program, and it's designed to give financially disadvantaged candidates a clear and defined path into the California Fire Service. Candidates who are accepted into the academy will have an opportunity to earn their Emergency Medical Technician Certification, and will train to complete the candidate physical ability test, as well as the written test, which are all entry-level requirements for California fire departments to enter into the fire service. The CalJack Academy, as Chief White mentioned, is a partnership, and it's a partnership between the California Firefighter Joint Apprenticeship Committee, the Butte County Office of Education, of whom we've worked with for over 20 years in terms of apprenticeship training, and the Sacramento Fire Department, and the Sacramento Firefighters Local 522. The grant funding comes from the California Community College Chancellor's Office, and that is what is enabling us to offer this program free of charge. So it will be tuition-free, and it will make available to applicants who have economic need, a tuition-free EMT, all the requirements for the physical ability test and written test. But in addition, we, because we are trying to target a population who may not have other resources, we're also providing stipends for transportation and childcare costs. One of the barriers we know is there, is that, for instance, we're trying to get more women into the fire service, they're single parents, we're trying to make it available to them so that they can have this opportunity. We're making the classes evenings and Saturdays, so that it's attainable for those who work. And we are having a mentoring program with the resources from the SAC City Fire Department and Local 522. We have firefighter mentors, instructors and assistant instructors, and they're also providing the ride-along opportunities so they can get their EMT. So we're trying to do as much as we can to break down the barriers so that these individuals can be a success, and actually have a direct entry into the fire service. In addition, they'll receive the guaranteed interview with SAC City Fire Department. SAC City Fire Department actually currently uses our statewide eligibility list for hiring, and so these individuals would be on that list, so they would be eligible for hire. And as well as, there's about 50 or 60 other fire departments in the state who hire from this list currently, and that's only growing. So, the opportunity is really there, it's truly a pathway, pre-apprenticeship into, and that's why we got the grant, is because it's truly a pathway, and because we had so much support. In applying for the grant, we had to have letters from everyone supporting this, and we thank you, Mayor Steinberg, for writing a letter on our behalf as well, because it was really that, that the community, the apprenticeship community, and the Chancellor's Office saw this opportunity. We are a pilot program, and so...
Let's wrap it up, please.
Okay, it's a pilot program, so we need it to be a success here in Sacramento, and we need you to get it out to your community so that we can get the recruitment efforts going. Thank you.
Thank you very much, an excellent presentation. Mr. Rice?
Mr. Mayor, Brian Rice, President of Sacramento Firefighters Local 522. I'll be really brief. We had a very successful press announcement today, Mayor Steinberg, thank you. I will say that, my initial phone call with the mayor probably lasted about 10 seconds before he said, "What can I do? How do I support this?" And so it's really a team effort. We've met with a few council members already, we're making the rounds, and the assistance that we're going to be asking is depth into your community, to reach people of all gender, color, economic, but really, we want to deliver the fire service to people who have never thought of having this as a profession before. Time is valuable, thank you.
Thank you, Brian, I can't wait to make my comments, but we'll turn it over quickly. What else, Chief White, briefly?
In closing, I just wanted to briefly acknowledge the members of the fire departments...
Please.
It's their Advisory Council on Equity and Unity...
Stand up, all of you.
...who came here to support the program tonight.
Thank you very much, wow. This is a big deal, I'm going to save my comments for the, after the council, but this is a big deal, and I'm really glad you're bringing it forward here. Let's go to the council here, we don't have any public testimony, so we'll start with Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to just take a minute to say, this, for me, this is really a full-circle moment. It's several things that we're trying to check off the boxes, right? We, this mayor has laid, laid down the gauntlet on youth jobs and career pathways for young people, and this checks that box. This is a career pathway into a very good job, the fire service, something that we value. It also checks a box that Vice Mayor Jennings and Councilmember Carr and Councilmember Warren and I have worked hard on, which is diversity, and wanting to make sure that we reach people we haven't reached before, and through our own communities. So, we have the opportunity to go out and get young people into this profession. What a gift that is for us. And then, of course, my personal favorite, equity in that fire department. And, you know, I was afforded the opportunity to go to law school as a single mom. Really, I could make it work for two reasons. It was at night, so I could work during the day, and I had subsidized childcare. So if I hadn't had those two things, I wouldn't have a law degree hanging on my wall right now. So I know that when you go out and talk to these people in the community that are in situations that some of us have been in in our lives, you are bringing the full package solution. It's not just tuition, which sometimes, you know, you're really, you get that, and you still know you can't do it. You can't do it because there are too many other barriers. But when you can provide help with childcare, and help with transportation, and help with whatever the other components are that go with tuition, the books, the materials, the tutoring, the mentoring, all of those pieces coming together really make this a tremendous opportunity for people in our community. And so, Mayor, thank you for your leadership on this, and the fire department, and I know that Local 522 stepped way out in front to make sure that Sacramento got this opportunity, and I'm very grateful, and I look forward to working with you all in my district to help bring forward some diverse candidates that we can then streamline into our department. Thank you for that.
Excellent, thank you so much. Councilmember Gueda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and first, first I was, got to say that we were bummed that we couldn't join in on the press conference this afternoon. We were discussing an issue in Legend Law on the issue of enforcement on illegal marijuana, and one of those big issues was the issue of butane that Chief White and the fire department has worked big on this to try to, to go after in our residential community. So first, I'll start off with saying that, that I want to thank, you know, all of the efforts on this, and I'm committed to helping this pilot program be a success, right, right from the beginning here. And, you know, Brian, you know, our conversation about how do we look at getting, you know, a diverse pool of kids, how do we look at showing how great this career is, Chief White, you know, and our conversation about how, how we do this as well, and what can we do to bring this down there? And finally, when we had our open house in Station 10, and that conversation we had with all of the firefighters of, I think it was B Shift that day, that we were talking about, how do we get more, more folks in, interested in the fire service? I mean, this is exactly what we need, if we're going to look at making sure that every young person knows that there's a different opportunity for a great career, one that's committed to public service, and one, right now, that where we definitely need more people. And finally, the point of diversifying our police force, this is, I mean, our fire force, this is a great example of how we get out into the community. So with that, I'm committed to helping out. I want to make sure that every time we are out in the community and talking to our community leaders, that they know about this program, so we get a good pool. And with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for all our...
Thank you very much. Eric, Councilor Sheneer.
Thanks, Mayor, just real quickly, I want to add my thanks. We had your folks come to a meeting with some of our pastors in Oak Park, we hooked them up with American Legion High School. I know you already talked to the principal at American Legion High School, and he is recruiting folks to sign up for this, so he's pretty excited about it. So I just want to thank you for your responsiveness and how quickly you got out there. I know Rich Baranski was pretty excited about it, and we'll continue to work with you and invite you when we have public meetings, and talk about jobs in our, in our communities, in particular, underserved communities. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say this is a great program, and I'm going to find you some participants.
You know what, you win the prize, thank you. Councilman Carr.
That was really good. First of all, I want to thank you for coming out to our movie night. We showed the video, and quite a few people were enthusiastic about it. When you came to my office to brief me, we talked about some of the impediments that might stop some people from being able to apply to the program. And a couple just jump off the page. One, a valid driver's license. There are many people in these communities, especially in District 8, that don't drive, they don't have a license. There are also the doctor's clearance for physical activity. Even though the Affordable Care Act passed, there are many, many people who don't have access to medical care, other than the emergency room. And so that plays right into the up-to-date vaccinations. So maybe there's some leeway there where we could, if you can pass the other requirements, you can get these while you enroll in the program perhaps, or help people to get a license. Some people don't have access to cars even, to get a license and to get access to medical care, so that they can be qualified to work in the program. And I appreciate that your willingness to work on those things, and recognize that they are impediments. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Vice Mayor Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor, and I want to thank you too for your leadership in this program. I had the opportunity to meet with the chief and the partnership in order to talk about this and all the great things that it entails, and I think when we look at the stipends, and you take a look at the class schedules, when you take a look at the fact that it's tuition-free, and when you take a look at the fact that they're going to get a guaranteed interview, you've taken away all the barriers that someone would have, and you've given them the opportunity that maybe they thought they had missed out on. So, you know, our commitment for all of us, because the only thing you've asked us to do is to get the word out. And so we are committed to, whether it's within our churches, within our religious organizations, within our nonprofits, our community organizations, within our communities, our districts, to get the word out, to make sure that we get that pilot program filled up and truly effective, and we know that a pilot program means just what it says. It's a pilot program, it's not here forever. And so I'm glad to see those who are still here in the audience, because they're hearing the story of this as well, and they will help to spread the word. Is that true? I see you nodding, that's right. Over at the Twin Rivers location, we need to spread the word, because this is truly going to give many of those who always wanted a career in fire service, gives them the opportunity to maybe fulfill that, even though they may have thought that they missed it the first time. So I'm excited, I'm excited that we have the opportunity to diversify the force, and to bring on candidates that I think can have a career in fire service.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Councilman Hanson.
Just real quick, thank you so much, this is a great program. Mr. Mayor, thanks for writing that letter and getting us the money.
I write letters, I do.
He does, he loves to. Just two things, we have Health Professions High, which is a SAC City program, and I don't know if that's a good place to recruit, but I think it would be, so hopefully we can do some outreach there. And then also, SHRA got a Jobs Plus grant from the federal government, we're working with people who live in public housing to get them into job training. I think this would be, that would be a good partnership with this program, given the needs of those residents and the access to career training, so I just suggest we, we look into those partnerships.
Good, thank you very much. Just a couple final comments, we did have a great press event, I just want to thank the chief and Ms. De La Peña, and Brian Rice, and 522, thank you, a true partnership. So, this was a Community College Chancellor's Grant, I don't know if you know that, this is a state grant. And so just, maybe a little bit of minor bragging on behalf of our city here, because we are bringing it home here, and leveraging state and federal funds again and again for the benefit of the city. Whether it's the cap and trade dollars that we talked about tonight around Twin Rivers for housing, whether it's the workforce training grant of $1 million for high school internships, whether, whether it's whole person care, whether it's Volkswagen, $44 million. And now, we get $500,000 to do something very special. And Councilmember Ashby and the other members, I think, said it very well, this hits a number of different priorities of our city. We say it again and again, we grow this economy, the public sector, the private sector, it's only great if it's tied back to our neighborhoods and our kids. And here, we have an opportunity to help give 35 Sacramento's, 18 and 19-year-olds, the opportunity to enter the fire service, and to focus on diversity in our neighborhoods. This is great stuff. And I like what Councilmember Hanson said a minute ago, I think about just bringing forward the other job training grants. Want to see, by the way, if this can be leveraged in some ways to even, to even grow it more. And so, this is good stuff. And let's keep, keep being aggressive about bringing down these resources so that we can do more to grow our economy, to help young people, alleviate homelessness, and all the other things that we have to do. Excellent work. Do we need to, we need to take a motion and second on this?
Receive and file.
Receive and file. I, I'm for that, I'm for receiving it, I am. Yeah, hear me the check, thanks you guys for waiting, appreciate it very much. Okay, let us move. Let us move to the, and thank you to all the men and women back there who really put this stuff together. Go get them. We have one last item tonight, minor item.
We have two speakers.
We do have two speakers. Do we have a presentation? Who is going to make the presentation? Is this Chief Hahn and Mr. Devlin? Chief Hahn, first presentation before the city council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
The full city council. Well, you know, welcome.
Thank you. As you just said, I'm Daniel Hahn, I'm your police chief, and I wanted to just open for Joe on how we are proposing to deal with the illegal marijuana growth in our city. So as you, many of you know, if not all, from your districts and complaints and things like that, illegal marijuana grows pose a significant threat to our community and the neighborhoods that they exist in, both with violent crime that oftentimes surrounds them, with fire hazards, and then just the fact that now we are legalizing marijuana operations, so to allow illegal marijuana operations to operate at the same time is not probably a good idea. So, as you also know, we have staffing issues within the police department, so it's critical that we find people, officers, that have the ability to do this, that doesn't gravely impact our other duties and ability to handle calls and patrol our city and the neighborhoods. So with that, our, our recommendation is that we utilize SWAT, and I know there's been some talk about SWAT in the manner of their skills in being SWAT officers, and do we really need that in enforcing of marijuana grows? So it's really not a matter of what they're trained specifically to do, it's a matter that they're police officers, and that's the, that's the best resource that we think to handle this right now, not because of their SWAT training, but because they're police officers, and they're our best option in terms of resources right now, because all the other options are, have, I guess on the scale of being critical, more critical functions, for example, we can't pull 12 people out of patrol right now, because patrol is, is, has staffing issues already, and to pull 12 people out of that would not be appropriate. So, our recommendation is that we use the Justice for Neighbors model, because a lot of this work involves multiple departments, whether it be fire, city attorneys, code, and police officers to handle the issues that go on, and we have a very high number of illegal marijuana operations within our city. And so, this is our best way for, in the interim, to try to tackle this issue. In the long term, as you all know, the long-term solution is adding staffing and permanent staffing to do this, but even if we had the funding coming in rapidly from these operations, it would still take time to add that staff. Obviously, we have to go through the hiring process and the academies, so this is our kind of middle time before we can accomplish those things, to still pay attention to these illegal grows, and hopefully bring relief to many of the neighborhoods that are, are engaging in some of this activity. So, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Joe to finish the presentation.
Thank you very much, Chief Hahn.
Thank you.
I think one of the things we'd like to explore, I know, is the timing here, because you're exactly right, you know, that we're in a bit of a timing conundrum here, where the fees aren't... You know, we're in a bit of a timing conundrum here where the fees aren't coming in yet. It takes time to hire up once the fees do come in. But are we planning ahead to try to correlate the receipt of the bulk of the fees with the hiring? And do we know when we'll be able to have both the resources and the hiring done to increase the enforcement? That's the ultimate question for me.
Well, we're ready to go with the hiring process, but even if that's all coordinated, it still takes time to get people through academies and all that. But yeah, I would say on our end, we're ready.
Okay. Joe? Mr. Devlin?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Joseph Devlin with your Office of Cannabis Policy and Enforcement. Thank you, Chief Hahn, for the overview of the proposed use of SWAT and meeting the challenge of illegal cultivation head-on. The city of Sacramento has been very forward-thinking and progressive in its adoption of its regulatory infrastructure for cannabis. We have nearly completed our basic framework for regulating the cannabis industry that had been illegal for over one hundred years, operating in a legal gray area for the last ten. Nonetheless, cannabis has existed in our community for all of this time. And while we still have a few pieces of the framework to complete, we are far ahead of the curve relative to other cities. In the course of confronting the challenge of regulating legal cannabis, we've also had to face and own the challenge of illegal cannabis, most pervasively being illegal residential cultivation. To be clear, had we not set a course of establishing a legal framework for the cannabis industry in Sacramento, we still would have had the challenges of illegal cultivation taking place in our community. Sacramento has several factors that likely contribute to the number of illegal grow houses, our relatively affordable price of housing, especially after the, brought after the economic downturn, our geography, access to freeways, ports, airports, and our relatively affordable utility rates, namely SMUD. These factors have combined to create a bit of a perfect storm for what we're dealing with. As Chief Hahn described, the deployment of SWAT is a strong and aggressive response that will have an immediate impact on illegal cultivation activities. This response also sends a very clear message to those committing these crimes that they are not welcome in our community, and that we are very serious about rooting out these illegal operations. In addition to the response from Sacramento Police, we are adding two building inspectors, two additional code officers to support that work, and a property assistant for the city police department as well. The framework of this initial response is modeled after the Justice for Neighbors program. Police working with code and the city attorney's office will be essential for success over the long term. As additional permit revenues come in, we will continue to add capacity in a balanced approach using the JFN teams as our model. We will use the experience that we gain over the next few months to refine our tactics, improve our strategies, and look for efficiencies. We will continue our conversations with state lawmakers around establishing additional legal tools and limits of liability. Most importantly, we will make sure that our neighborhoods remain safe. The proposal before you tonight sends a message loud and clear that those operating illegally are not welcome in our city. Additional steps that we have taken, are taking, are amending our residential cultivation ordinance to make it more clear and easier to enforce, reducing that number from four hundred square feet into, in a single home, to six plants. Additionally, the Law and Ledge Committee moved forward a proposed restriction on the sale of butane, which is a volatile organic compound used in the extraction, illegal extraction of cannabis oil.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Let's, we do have two members of the public who want to testify, then we'll turn it to the council.
I have speaker slots, Mac Worthy and David Plag. Mr. Worthy?
People, I think we have heard enough about marijuana. Now, we sit here, a month or so ago, was a guy sitting right here, had a warehouse full, and you knew and you didn't go and arrest him. Why? Because he is white. We sit here and we talk about drugs. Why would you put it on our neighborhood? Why would you legalize it? You don't even have the ability to disperse it. Illegal will grow. There are some things about dispensers. I ask you, where are the people that has pain legal? But you don't even have a clause to amount, they can purchase at one time. So you leave the door open, that a man told me, he's a man, a thousand-dollar piece worth three thousand in the streets. But in Oak Park, it's not the marijuana. It's the white folks that can make their own drugs, infinities, which put people together, run labs, right here in Oak Park, out of the hills, out of San Francisco, right here in Oak Park. How are you going to find out they're doing it? You don't have that detective ability here in this town. I knew Green, all those guys, some of the homicide detectives, the ability's not there. You're going to get some people killed. You're going to get some people shot for lying. You're going to get some policemen shot by not going in with no warrant to such a house. Now, there's utilities. You can check your utilities. There's places in New York I can call tomorrow and get the FBI's in. Because why would a person have a four-hundred-dollar light bill with a two-bedroom apartment? See, you talk too much to grow intelligence of what's going on here. You cannot collect intelligence. These guys, they have got that ability. But you want to, oh, we want to go and just stop this, people. You can't stop drugs in America. America is the, well...
Economy of Mexico.
Thank you, sir.
And you will always be on drugs, all of you.
Thank you. Okay.
David Plag here. Don't see David.
David is here. He testified before you. Welcome again. David?
My name's David Plag. I'm with the Del Paso Boulevard Partnership. And the business districts and Tracy had to leave, but the business districts are really on the front line of the marijuana industry and with what we're having to face. And the entire process to work, we have to be able to enforce the laws that we have as well as the new industries that we're going to have to face. And I'm not sure if the city is really doing a good job enforcing the laws that we have now. And now you're going to expand that and ask the chief to go out and do all the things that he needs to do to be able to enforce these new codes? And I've got to give Joe credit, he's doing the best he can. But man, I mean, that's just not, it's just not practical. I don't think we're going to be able to do a good job. And I've talked to Allen, I've talked to other members. We are going to be in a bad situation relatively soon. And I don't think that we're going to be able to resolve these issues. And I made the point before, I just think that we need to slow down the process. I've got to give Joe credit that he's trying to look forward, he's trying to get resources to catch up. But this is going to hit us really soon. And I just hope that the business districts that are having to face these issues are the ones that are going to have to be dealing with this. I mean, I've talked to Tracy and with Councilmember Guerrero. I mean, you've got sixty, seventy percent of them. Allen's got twenty, thirty percent of them. I mean, we've, we're in a real bad situation, and I don't know how we're going to be able to enforce what we have. Thanks.
Thank you again for coming tonight and for speaking to us and participating and trying to help us find the right path here. Okay. We do have members of the City Council who are up to speak. Let me turn it over to Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor Arturo. Would you come forward for just a second, please? I asked for this item to come back, and I did so with a statement about the health and safety of our communities. And while I appreciate that overview, it falls short of what my expectation was to receive from you tonight, although I do think, having met with you up to this point, that you have prepared the items that I have asked you for. Chief Hahn hit on the staffing issue for SAC PD and solved for that issue by saying that he could use his SWAT team. I know that we all agree we want to move forward with the JFN model, and I heard Joe Devlin say that as well. But I didn't hear, I heard him rattle off a couple of things about two building inspectors and two code folks, and that's just inadequate for me. We talked about the size and magnitude of this problem and the need to allocate resources accordingly. SWAT team, if we use that as our sort of gauge, which I think is an appropriate gauge, is not analogous to two building inspectors or two code officers. And we didn't touch on the city attorneys. We also didn't touch on the relationship with the district attorney, which I know you have worked on, and where we are with that, as well as with the judicial council, which has agreed to work with the city of Sacramento. We didn't talk about confiscation, or storage, or destruction, which I know Fire has been working diligently on with you, Arturo. And we didn't talk, most importantly, about the code change that I know the city attorney's office under Gus has put together, which is going to allow us to actually move forward differently here, and allow us, importantly, to seek reimbursement as we do this so that we can pay for these services at the end of the day. So could you walk us through the plan to implement those items in short order and give us the timeframe for when we can expect to see the marijuana illegal grows in homes throughout our city knocked down?
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the City Council. Arturo Sanchez with the city manager's office through the chair to Councilmember Ashby's question. It's an excellent series of points that you make, and it almost seems remiss that I am essentially going to restate what you've already stated, but I will do so. At this point, what the chief has covered is that we will be taking SWAT personnel and breaking it up to assist our code enforcement inspectors and the fire department and coordinate inspection and service of warrants essentially on illegal grows using a series of criteria that were developed through JFN. So in essence, we're breaking up the SWAT team, which has two sergeants and multiple officers, to allow us to have multiple teams throughout the city to cover the impacted areas. Each of those teams will be comprised of additionally code enforcement inspectors and fire personnel, which will be deployed when we serve those search warrants. Those search warrants will be coordinated with the city attorney's office, who has already opened up discussions with the district attorney about what level of criteria we need in order to have it be a criminal search warrant as opposed to a inspection search warrant. And we will deploy the appropriate search warrant depending on the criteria that we have available with the facts that we have at our disposal. And so we are essentially going to deploy those two teams to take those calls that have gone into JFN, and we'll begin aggressively pursuing that within the next two weeks. So we're already going to start those meetings with the SWAT personnel. The city attorney's office is already working on coordinating that meeting so that we can begin those inspections. With regards to the confiscation and the storage of the material, we are working on identifying a site with the appropriate security that will allow us to do it. Concurrently, the city attorney's office is working on the legislation that will allow us to do that so that it's clear. We need, as I understand it, and Mr. Martinez can correct me if I'm wrong, a process by which they can have an administrative hearing for anything that we essentially take. And we will be looking at also not just taking the cannabis, but also the equipment and appropriately dealing with that and finding a location to store that as well. And finally, I think the pieces that Joe were covered that I'd like to lift up is that concurrently, we are aggressively pursuing the hiring and the recruitment of those positions as soon as we possibly can to fill in the other elements which will allow us to continue to regulate this area. So on the administrative side, for the regulation of the lawful permitting, which will help alleviate the pressure on the illegal side, we'll also be working on building, bringing on the building inspectors, as well as concurrently running a contract to allow us to review the permit applications, which will hopefully add the lawfully permitted, the lawfully permitted activities to open up so that it can alleviate on the illegal end. So we're going to work it on multiple fronts at the same time aggressively, and that will start within the next two weeks.
Let me just be clear for me, from one council member, that while I appreciate that we work on the legal grows and how legal groups come in and do, that was not my ask tonight, and that was not the report-back item. That, to me, is a whole separate issue. And the idea that, you know, we would have had these illegal grows, whether we had moved forward or not, is a matter of opinion, not fact, and I'm not interested in it. I'm interested in the fact that we have too many illegal grows. In my district alone, there are over a hundred. And I am not willing to step one day further out and allow the crime that continues to happen around those homes to proceed without us taking an extreme measure. And so I hear the police department saying they are prepared and putting SWAT forward. I hear some talk about, we're going to get this and we're going to get that. My hope was that by the time you got here today, you would have those teams organized. So you're telling me that you believe these teams, I heard you say that you believe these teams can begin enforcement within two weeks. So do you think that the remainder of what you need to gather from the fire department for the storage or destruction component can be determined within those two weeks? And does Gus have the code language written, ready for adoption? Does that need to come back to council? What is the mechanism on that component that really is allowing us to move forward?
Gus Martinez, City Attorney's Office. That PFP tonight, I believe, right, it's going to be five hundred dollars per plant. So that's one of the admin penalties that we're going to be imposing. So that's coming forward to you next week for discussion. So that's one feature. The other feature that we have is working through, you brokering a meeting with the DA's office. We met with their major narcotics unit, and they gave us really a game plan on how to go about doing criminal search warrants. So we've got the inspection warrants pretty much down. We've done nineteen of them, and we plan on doing more. And now that we're going to have resources from the SAC PD, we're going to essentially train them on how we do this and really roll this out with intensity because it's understanding that we're going to have SWAT really ready to go on this.
And you have the judicial council prepared to help you correct with the things that you need for them?
The judicial council in terms of...
And you have some judges that you've spoken with that are going to help you with warrants?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, absolutely. Yeah. The presiding judge, Cole Hain, has been very good with us. He understands the SMUD readings, the excessive SMUD readings, and how important that is for getting warrants. Inspection warrants are a little easier to get than search warrants. So a search warrant requires a little bit more extensive criminal investigation work, but the inspection warrant...
And Gus, just because we're, it's late in the night, the confiscation component, which was missing before, are we confident moving forward with that now?
Yes.
So we'll be able to confiscate plants, lights, grow materials, equipment?
Yes, under multiple authorities. Criminal and civil.
And I know you worked hard, and thank you. You deserve all the credit in the world, you and your team, for coming up with the idea of the per plant. You did research on what other cities and best practices were doing. That mayor is going to allow us to pay for this and pay ourselves back and not have this come at a loss. It's a big deal coming out of the city attorney's office. I just want to make sure all those systems are in place and that we're going to see enforcement in our neighborhoods by the end of this month.
Before...
That's what I'm hearing, too. I just want to make sure that that's the walk away today.
Absolutely. And part of it is, is that we need to make sure that we do everything by the book so that we actually get the results that you're looking for, which is prosecution of the individuals who are actually participating in this.
Right, absolutely. I want confiscation, prosecution. I want it to be a final, a final meeting because, God bless our police department and our JFN teams, they've been chasing the same people around houses because they haven't had the authority to do what they need to do to follow through. And part of that was a lack of collaboration with the DA's office, which is why, you know, I'm glad that you guys followed through with that component. I just want to make sure that this time, when we knock down a house, the plants leave with us, the grow equipment leaves with us, and that person is very, has a very large fine to deal with and is unlikely to come back for that type of business through that mechanism in the city of Sacramento.
We have the elements in place. We will aggressively pursue them, and we understand the direction, and we're heading in that direction.
Then, Mayor, I'm happy to move this item tonight, but I would like to ask for a report back in a fairly short order, maybe a couple of months, so that we can, even if it's just on a consent, but I just want a report to show us how many homes they've hit and how many plants they've confiscated, how much money has been refunded, how many resources we've utilized.
It could be a very simple data table as well, how many search warrants we've served, how much of each.
Yeah. I think the minimum, this top...
Yeah, I think the minimum, this, this topic ought to be back before the city council at least every couple of months, because it's complex and it's very, very important.
I agree. The topic is wrought with issues that need to be determined, but this particular item and a report back on where we are with this, is two months sufficient? Okay. Then I'm happy to move the item with that request for a report back.
Good deal. Thank you very much. Councilman Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I think, you know, from the time we passed our original ordinance, I've kind of expressed my discomfort with the way and the speed in which this is moving forward, but also really the lack of clarity. And so, I want to make several statements, and then maybe there's some clarification that could be brought tonight, but, you know, I see us being overwhelmed right now as a city with a number of issues. We have a housing crisis, you know, we have, I think, an inadequate planning staff to deal with that. And we got the burden of all these applicants and the, the expectation to be efficiently processing these applicants. We have a staffing shortage on the planning side. We also have a number of unfilled police positions that we need to fill, fire as well. And I see this as being further detriment to our city, trying to deal with this issue. And then we have things like the NEXA study that we don't really, I, I don't know when that is anticipated to come back. I've heard some people say three months, four months, and I've heard as late as a year. And so, we don't even know what the measurable impacts are going to be from this industry. And yet, we're talking about arbitrarily giving fines and different things. We don't know that those fines are going to be sufficient. We don't know that the fees that we're attempting to collect are sufficient. I would suggest that the fees are not sufficient and will not do what they're intended to do. I will also say that the communities that a lot of these facilities are going to be in will have a disproportionate negative impact on communities that are already very sensitive. And I think this council's responsibility to those communities, I think, needs to be really reviewed, because when you're attempting to put 80% of the new cultivation facilities in essentially two districts, with one district being District Two, which has them spread throughout, the applicants are spread throughout the districts, they're not confined to industrial areas where I think cultivators should be practically allowed to, to operate until we get some of this information back, I, I think it's irresponsible. And some of the things that I'm seeing right now are, people are speculating buying commercial property on Del Paso Boulevard at Arden, and for cultivation reasons. And that's because we allow it in the use, even though we say a CUP, you know, you have to go through the process and all of that. But people are coming in speculating buying buildings, leasing buildings, and as we know, if you're going to cultivate, you can, you cannot have access essentially from the public just to walk in. The windows have to be darkened, the doors are essentially locked. And so, people are buying property, driving up real estate values, and making it that much more problematic for traditional retail to take place in these districts. And I think that's the wrong message to send. I, I think it does, um, the, actually more harm than, than good, and, and I think it's going to continue to be that way until we get some clarity. So, you know, I thought about this long and hard, and for a number of reasons, I have elected to hire a law firm to work with District Two and our, and our council district to represent us in ways that might be a little different than from the city attorney's office. And I am extremely concerned about the impacts this is going to have in disproportionately poor communities, disproportionately minority communities, and communities that have been essentially dormant, for the lack of a better word, for traditional retail operation. And now you've got retail operators competing for spaces with marijuana cultivators that are coming in paying twice and three times as much as the, a traditional business. So you make it unaffordable for traditional retail business to come in and help revitalize these areas. I think it's problematic. I think it will continue to be problematic. And so I'm hopeful that, you know, during the course of this process, we will be able to refine the ordinance in a way that works for the communities that actually need this assistance the most. But one of my biggest disappointments is that I don't see the resources dedicated in the communities in which these impacts will be created, nor do I see the amount of the resource. I don't think the 1% that we've suggested is enough, and I'm still unclear as to where that 1% goes, how it's utilized, wherever it's supposed to go. You know, I've heard different people say different things, but it's still, it's very confusing. And I believe that, that also the, the illegal growers will be at a distinct advantage to the, to the, to the, to the legal growers, and that should not be the case. I don't think we have our arms around how we're going to deal with this illegal operation. We definitely do not have the resources to deal with it now. And again, you're going to, you're really going to put, I think, this city in a bind. And, I mean, if you think about housing and the, and the revenues that's generated from housing, and the lack of housing, and the lack of city planning staff to really deal with the applicants and officially process these, these projects, and then you burden it now with still short staff, and now we have all these other expectations for cultivation, I think it makes it more challenging for us. You know, I think, you know, there's still some, some, some ambiguity around setback requirements, and, and I think those, you know, there's some conflict between, I believe, between the state and local government. And, and I think there's likely to be more. And so, I'm, I'm hopeful that through this process, we will be able to modify this ordinance in a way that will work better for the entire city. But I believe very strongly that communities that are faced with this additional burden needs to have the resources to deal with it, or else it's going to be problematic. It will continue to be a, a weight on this city and one that we could have avoided. So with that, I'm going, I mean, if we're taking action on this item...
It's not an action item tonight. It's a receive and file.
Very good, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Receive and provide direction, which doesn't require a formal vote. I think the direction's being provided through the comments of the members.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Councilmember Gueda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank the chief and the, the planning staff for taking this on. Arturo, thank you very much, and also Gustavo, you guys have been, Captain Beasley out there as well, you guys have been active in, as far as, since I got on the council on going after these grows. And this was even before we even started having this conversation. So for some of us who live in the areas where there's been a lot of illegal grows, we know that Prop 64 was what exacerbated a lot of this. But it's been here beforehand, so I think the fact that we're getting on this is critical. I'm glad that we're moving on this quickly. A couple of things to note. Our JFN team, I had an opportunity to go out with our JFN team on one of these homes where they found a grow house, and I appreciate all the work that they're doing and how complex it is. I support the issue of using SWAT as a, as a short timeframe. I think we need, as, as the hiring comes, we have to create a, a stronger force that's dedicated to this. But in the meantime, what is, what I've, what I think is imperative for the, the community, I think also for functioning from a, from a staff level, and a good point of contact for council members, is a sergeant who's solely dedicated to this issue. And the good, the great example that I have is when there's an issue on the issue of homelessness or, or in, and who to contact, I know we can go to Sergeant Galliano, you know, and he has the expertise from multiple departments on how to communicate with them. And that's come through time and practice and expertise. And so I think that one of the, the directions that I would like to provide is to the city manager and our police chief, is that we identify that sergeant so that it could help us, at least from a council staff perspective and from the management perspective, that is, that's not a learning curve, that we can create that expertise while we recruit, because I know it's going to take us a while to hire those officers to recruit. One, I want to thank you, Joe, for setting up the town hall that we're going to have in District Six on this, on this and multiple issues. On the inspection side, clearly there are two major issues. There's the enforcement on the warehouse piece, but then there's the enforcement on the illegal grows that are happening, and they've been happening. Things, and so the, the last thing that I'd like to ask the city manager as direction here is, I want to continue to purse, pursue the opportunity to look at, right now, we can seize assets such as property cash, and can't seize the product, and we're trying to figure that out. But what I'd like to look at is, some of these homes become uninhabitable because of the mold and they're stripped out. What I'd like to do is find out, in those problem properties, how can we take control of the home? Because if that home is uninhabitable, we should be able to come in and retrofit it and put it back into our housing stock. And taking the home, I think, is the, the critical issue, because in some of the situations such that we've had in District Six, the person is arrested, they come back, and then they grow again. They're arrested, they come back, and they grow again. And part of it is Prop 64 reducing all of the, the penalties on it. And also our DA unwilling to prosecute those. So pushing more our DA to prosecute those issues, I think, is important. I, I hope that we will continue to push those prosecutions. But more importantly, let's focus on, on the critical issue here, which is all of the, the impacts to the community by these illegal marijuana grows in homes. They're, they've been happening, they're happening at a bigger scale, and a lot of this, it's happening now in the county, you see it happening in El Grove, you see it happening in other areas. So it's important for us to move on that. So as far as direction, I think the key thing right now is, I would like to see a dedicated sergeant that we can work with directly on this issue.
Through the chair to Councilmember Guerra's question, the chief actually just had this conversation with the city manager today, that we recognize that we need to fill that position, but actually with more than just one sergeant, if we're actually address the concerns that were raised originally by Councilmember Ashby, which is that the JFN model should be strengthened and deployed. It becomes an ongoing sort of repetitive answer, it's a resource problem, but we're working in that direction. Without me speaking on behalf, without me speaking for the chief directly, I know that that's the direction he's headed in, because we talked about that today. With regards to the properties themselves and the conditions and the state that they're in, I, in just having a good, quick conversation with Gus, it's not been our experience that the properties themselves are difficult to fix up. Most of these property owners actually have a lot of capital at their, at their, available to them, and so they're quick to fix them up. In those situations where we run into a property owner who does not have the ability to do that, or is unwilling to do that, the city attorney has in the past taken a variety of different actions, and Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong, as could Gus, but my understanding is those actions can range anywhere from a receivership action to a drug nuisance abatement action, or even depending on the condition, a substandard public nuisance action. All of those are legal tools, but they require a series of actions in advance by the city and the administrative side before they can get there, and sort of a record creation. So they're there as tools, but are, again, just to reiterate, our experience currently is that property owners themselves have the capital at their disposal that allows them to fix the buildings, right? The key, and I think the key to what Councilmember Ashby's original question was, is how do we take such aggressive action and prosecute such that it becomes not a viable business option for the individuals to ever want to come back to Sacramento? And so that we keep the regulated industry strong and healthy, but no one is willing to do the illegal industry to that extent. And it's an ongoing issue, staffing will always be an issue, and it's not just the warehouse issue, it will eventually be the manufacturing issue, it will be the dispensing issue, and these will be ongoing regulatory oversight issues that we will have to maintain as a city in order to make sure that, one, we're collecting our revenues, but, two, that everything is being properly overseen and appropriately accounted for, and that all product is actually going where it's intended to go, which is either to medical use or to adult personal use, if that's where the city goes, and that there's no diversion or any other nefarious activity that we're not tracking. And so, the goal and the intent is to get staffed up such, both on the police side, even on the fire side, on the city attorney's side, and on the code enforcement and building services side, so that you close all those gaps and you have a well-run, well-running, well-regulated, income-producing industry.
And, and I appreciate all of the thoroughness that you guys have done on all of those pieces there, but if, if the deterrent is losing the property, those, those owners are going to be thinking differently about who their tenants are, or if they are themselves, or at least getting that home from becoming a problem house. So, so, you know, I, I do appreciate that, and I hope that, we just did a receivership on 60th Street, which was a great success. Now that home is being repaired, and I want to thank the JFN team for that work and that. But if we could use the aggressiveness of that receivership, and of course, we have to follow the Fourth Amendment due process and rights to, you know, to the personal property, but I, I think that when we have a problem house, or, or a series of problem homes, and in some situations, you know, in certain areas in my district, there, there are multiple homes that are together, and they're usually, from my understanding, similar owners. So I think that threat will slowly, if you use the home as a threat, will be able to get at that issue. We want to get that message out clearly that, that that's not going to be tolerated here. So yes, criminal prosecution, civil prosecution, receivership, but, but more importantly, I want to get at that sooner.
Okay. Thank you.
That's a theme.
And Councilman Carr.
And to follow up on that, in your report, you indicated that you were getting with Representative Cooper, Assemblymember Cooper, to address that issue.
I believe that Joe has been having conversations, but I don't...
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. We've, we've met a couple of times with the Assemblymember Cooper's office. City Attorney's Office has been in communication and talks with the Ledge Council and Assemblymember Cooper's office, and there's a lot of nuance and, and, and legal difficulty in this area. And just this week, Councilmember Cooper's office reached out to us again, reached out to me again, and said, you know, "Can you come in?" And we think we might have a, a solution here that would be an extension of a liability as it relates to the, the seizure of, of those assets, so...
Your report, the detailed report that you gave was very good in spelling out what all the issues were, what the obstacles were, and I really appreciate that. But Arturo, my question is for you, and I think you answered this question. The end result that we are looking for is that there will be zero illegal grows.
In a utopian, ideal, absolute, yes, that is the goal. But that is always our goal, is no infractions anywhere, no violations of any kind. That's what we're striving for.
So you set that goal. Council didn't set that.
Our, our goal is to have everybody be a regulated, appropriately permitted facility. That's...
The goal that you set was not a viable business option. That means no one is in that business. So that's zero. And I appreciate you setting the goal. I think council should have set that as a goal, but you did, and that happens when, if we don't do it, then the staff will have to do it. So you organized to achieve that goal. And how long will it take you to achieve it with the organization that you have?
Too long for me to be able to give you a, a realistic timeframe. So what I can say is that the measured steps that we are taking now will begin to slowly erode the problem as quickly as we possibly can. It's two, two factors I can't account for. One is how many operations actually cease operating once they see that we're serious about this? Meaning if they see some prosecutions, if we're successful in working with our district attorney, if we're successful in a couple of cases that we get really high-profile coverage, it's unknown how many people will just vacate the area and stop doing it. Two, it is, with every action, there is an equal and opposite reaction, and unintended consequences for every regulatory action we take. There is a unknown that I can't cover for, which is either people drive deeper into obscurity, or they do business in a different way, which we have to naturally catch up to. And so those two factors are too difficult for me to, to, to be able to give you a realistic timeline. I will be back in two months, and I will tell you exactly how many cases we've dealt with, how many search warrants we've done, how many plants we might have confiscated, how many plants we've destroyed. At that point, we might be able to get a sense of where we're going.
We know, we know today how many illegal grows there are, right?
We, we believe there are several hundred in, throughout the city.
We can count a normal...
There's, there's data being tracked by... And there's data being tracked by several different fronts.
Average house will use 700, 800 kilowatts a month. These grows are using 3,400, 3,500 kilowatts a month. So we know, we can count the illegal grows.
There are standards that we're using to assess them, yes, sir.
And we know what size staff we have. It seems like we should be able to figure out how many we can get to in that period of time, in any given period of time.
It's a fair question. In the two-month report out, we could try and tackle that issue.
Hopefully, when you come back, you can tell us that. And the other thing is, even though we didn't make this result of zero grows, zero illegal grows, and I'm not saying that's not a good result, but if we had made it, what we would be considering as a council is, what are the trade-offs? What am I losing by putting resources into that?
Absolutely.
And I don't know what I'm losing in SWAT, I don't know what I'm losing in city attorney's office, so that would be a council decision, those are things that council should be talking about. The trade-offs, where we want to put our resources, what results we are looking for, and then you organize. If it's a sergeant, or lieutenant, or a captain, you pick that. What we pick is, what are the results? How much, how many of our resources are we going to dedicate to it? And what are we losing by doing that? What does our opportunity cost?
Through the chair to answer that?
The council discussion.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, Councilman Chenier.
Thank you, Mayor. So, just real quick, and I'll be brief. I think, considering where we were and where we are, and the fact that you guys are starting from scratch on a lot of this, building the infrastructure is going to take a little bit of time, but I appreciate the haste with which you're doing all these things, and I would like to add a couple things to the report that you'll be doing in a couple months. So I think there's two sides to this. This is pretty simple, and Arturo, you'll get it, and we can talk later as well. It's fine. I think what you do as far as how many plants we confiscate, I'd love to see how much money we confiscate, which I assume goes into our asset seizure fund, I think hopefully it will end up paying for the work that you're doing and the new hires that we'll have to get. All of those pieces, I think, are really important. The flip side of that is our capacity to continue the work, and actually, once we figure it out and get it running, how to get the flywheel turning a little bit quicker on that. So what I would like to see also is what the capacity looks like in the police department, in our attorney's office, in our code enforcement officers, so that we can get to whether it's 700, or 800, or 1,000. And I've heard numbers that are higher than that, so that's one piece of it. It would also be good, and we know that there are multiple ways that you're looking at this, including electricity usage, but it would be great to see, not specific houses, but kind of a heat map of the city, that we can update as we go, because that's how you're also going to see what impact you're having overall. I mean, we may be, you may be going in and confiscating X number of houses every day, we don't know how many new houses there are going to be that will be replacing those. And I think if we can look at a heat map of electricity usage around the city, we'll be able to see if we're making a dent in this over time. So those are, if that's a realistic thing, and working with our partners at SMUD, that would be great to see. Yeah, so I mean, I don't want to know, you're not going to tell us specifically which homes, which is fine, but it'd be nice to know kind of by district what that all looks like. You know, we all get, I think, lots and lots of questions from folks in our district, and I think that being clear about all of the pieces of the puzzle is going to be really important. So I also want to thank you, I know we're setting up in my neighborhood as well, one of the town hall meetings. I think people are very confused about current dispensaries versus grows versus illegal, and what that all is, so I think part of the educational effort that we really need to do now is get the folks that we report to, our constituencies, clear on what those different pieces are, because the impacts on neighborhoods will be very different from an illegal grow to a dispensary to a legal grow and things like that.
Good.
That's it.
I think these are good suggestions. So this has really been an important discussion, appreciate Councilmember Ashby asking it, that it brought forward, and, you know, everybody's grappling within their districts, especially Councilmember Warren. I know Councilmember Ashby has a lot of illegal grows, and Councilmember Garrett, and I just want to commend all of you, but especially Councilmember Garrett, because I know in talking to him, that he and his staff are working very closely with the police department now on all of these sets of issues, and I love the thinking around asset seizure, and some of the other ways we can be aggressive in a prosecutorial sense, not only recruit some of the money that we're spending on the police resources, but trying to address the balance here. So thank you for that. You know, I heard a couple things tonight that just make me want to express what I think is the conundrum, and maybe the catch-22 here, if you will. And Mr. Plag, who testified here twice tonight, and in a very good way, said that it is going to hit us real soon. And then Councilmember Warren said, we definitely don't have the resources now regarding the illegal grows. And I think both of those statements are true, but what happens if we do not regulate, permit, and tax this now legal product? What happens? Do the illegal grows expand from approximately 1,000 to 1,500 in 2,000? With our police department having 45 vacancies and a budget that is okay, but where the lines are going to cross very soon, where we're not going to have additional money to invest in enforcement? So the city manager has done the right thing here by taking our 2016, 2017, '18 budget action, and expediting some of the resources around code enforcement and city attorney resources, et cetera, to get at enforcement now. But I hope we're not going to keep debating whether or not we are moving forward in regulating this issue. Councilmember Warren brings up every single time the 1% issue, and whether or not his district, for example, is getting a fair return from the impact. I think that's a very legitimate issue, let's debate that. Let's debate that. And let's figure out the gap analysis that Councilmember Chenier referred to a moment ago, because that's really the uncertainty, and I know that this is imperfect, right? Chief Hahn cannot exactly say how quickly it's going to take to fill the 45 vacancies. Joe Devlin cannot say exactly when we're going to receive the permit fees for those who've expressed an interest, but I do think it would help the members and the public to at least try to put forward a roadmap, because you guys are drinking from the fire hose now with all of this. But I think what's needed here is a little bit of a roadmap that shows the members and the public how exactly we are going to build and gain the resources necessary, first, to enforce the illegal grows, secondly, to regulate the legal industry, and then, third, hopefully to have the additional tax revenue that we keep bugging Laney about, around how we're going to deal with our budget challenges in the future. We need that. I don't, the strategic plan is too government cliche, but we need the gap analysis on the enforcement, and we need some form of a timeline that shows how we get to more resources on the police front, and how that's going to match up, even imperfectly, with the receipt of the permit fees that we're going to collect as a result. Because if we don't get to that in some form, we're going to be arguing with each other and talking around how we maximize the benefit of the legalization in California, while really being serious about mitigating the impacts in our city, and especially in two of these council districts where most of the sites are going to be located. Thank you, it's a good discussion. Let's move to, that's it, that's it for the agenda. We do have a couple council, yeah. Two-month report back, exactly. Same timeframe as Councilmember Hanson's land use issue. Okay, the same night. I insist on it, okay? Here we go, we do have a couple commission appointments, go ahead.
Thank you, to the Sacramento Disabilities Advisory Commission, the appointments are Tim Haley and Will Kennedy. To the Sacramento Youth Commission, the appointments are Emily Kawada, Juliet Tokterman, Madeline Neal, Nazak Walii Ali, and Sophie Gedehun.
Okay, we have council ideas and questions, and then I know Councilmember Chenier wants to adjourn in memory for a very, very prominent member of our community who contributed so much, Mario Guerrero. Gutierrez, sorry, I'm so tired. Mario Gutierrez, Mario Gutierrez, not Mario Guerrero, Mario Gutierrez, I apologize. Councilmember Garrett, ideas and questions?
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, this is, this will be a direction to staff. Councilmember Jennings and I have been discussing the issue of our pass Fourth of July, and how significantly illegal fireworks have gotten out of control, and how much they've posed not only a danger, but really disrupted what should be a very festive, unifying day here in our country on Fourth of July. So as we prepare for the next Fourth of July, I want to make sure that our city provides assurances to our constituents that we can realistically start to plan and address these complaints and the issues of illegal fireworks. I witnessed it myself, right around my mother's house, where massive fireworks flying through the air, landing on people's homes, and major explosions, it poses a threat to the safety of kids. It poses not only, VFW Hall 67, Post 67 worked with us to try to get education out there for veterans, because it has been an issue with our veterans, and we have to get ahead of this. And we know it's a complex issue, and a lot of folks like to enjoy that festivity, but the illegal fireworks is critical. So, you know, San Joaquin Valley has recently implemented a very successful firework task force, you know, with their police department. They've seized over 1,000 pounds of fireworks. This last year, they had 13 arrests leading to that, and I want to make sure that we're working that. So to that effect, I'd like to direct our police department, code enforcement, our fire department, to report back to council with a program and strategy of how we're going to place and mitigate enforcement on the legal fireworks, using data collection from ShotSpotter, the apps that we did as well, and I know that was an issue too, we got firearms issues. Additionally, I want to direct our police department and city attorney to look at increasing the penalties for the use and possession of illegal fireworks. I think that we have to make sure that it's clear that this is not tolerated to sell and use illegal fireworks. Last, we want to work with the police and fire to begin planning an abatement and enforcement program now, so we're not discussing this a month before Fourth of July. And for any of us who were down in the south area, I mean, you would have thought it was Cal Expo. I mean, it was pretty intense. And with that, I want to thank Councilmember Jennings for bringing this issue. I know we're going to work with our police department to put together a stakeholder meeting with constituents who are concerned about this, but Mr. City Manager, we'd like to, we'd like us to start working on this issue today.
Okay.
Lastly, thank you, Councilmember Warren here for bringing this to our attention. You know, as you guys know, I'm a big Sac State nut and advocate, go Hornets, but to show how Sacramento has made it to the map, American Airways and Airlines did a whole expose on Sacramento. But specifically, one of the things that they outlined was the great work and the trailblazers of President Robert Nelson of Sac State. So along with the why you got to visit Sacramento when you're traveling, and our new police chief is a proud alumni, over there, go Hornets, it signified how great Sac State is, so stingers up, go Hornets with that. And thank you, Councilmember Warren, for bringing that to our attention, love to promote Sacramento and Sac State. And last but not least, August 25th, it's going to be food truck night, but also movie night at Tahoe Park, so hope you come out to movie night and enjoy some food trucks. We also have our mobile district office this Friday morning at the Capital Mobile Home Park, Capital Estates, manufactured home community, and our food truck night over at College Glen on August 26th. Finally, we mentioned it earlier here, September 6th, with Mr. Devlin, we're going to have a town hall to discuss the issue of cannabis at the George Sims Community Center, and then, and that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for indulging me on that.
That's a lot, I'm so glad. That was good, a lot going on in District Six. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor. Brandon, would you mind placing that item? And Mindy, would you mind turning on the overhead? Mayor, several months ago, I asked that an item be brought before this council through the channels that we normally direct items. That was a request on my part to have smoke shops included in the special use permit regulations that the city does, so similar to alcohol or marijuana. And that process has been very slow, and has not afforded an opportunity to get back to the council anytime quickly. This image will be on the news on every channel tonight. This is a picture of, obviously, an armed robbery at the smoke shop in my district that sits squarely between two childcare centers, one on each side, both very nice childcare centers. And so, my team during this meeting has been answering a lot of media calls, and staff calls, and very concerned community members based on this image. And I believe that had we moved forward with the item about special use permits, that smoke shop would not be there. So I would like to ask, and I spoke to the mayor about this beforehand, and I'll let you say your piece on that, but I need this to move faster. So my ask tonight is that it come back to council as soon as possible, and that Ryan DeVore and his team brief me with a sense of urgency on how we can get this item back to this council within the next two weeks.
So, Councilmember Ashby, and I had an opportunity to talk about this, I want to back up 95.5% of what you had. This needs, Mr. DeVore needs to meet with the council member right away. We need the most expeditious path possible to bring this back to the city council. The slight change is that I do want us to follow the right protocol about using our committees in the right way, whether it's law and ledge, there's a question about whether or not the planning commission would have to look at this, I don't know. As quickly as possible, get this back to the city council, because this is the kind of scene and imagery that obviously is terrible and we need to address, okay?
I believe that the city manager has actually already pulled the item onto the council's agenda for future discussion, so I think Mayor will be able to strike a balance here between your request to follow procedure and my request to come back to council in two weeks. My understanding, my staff did some research today, I don't believe it is on the law and ledge log currently. So that would mean we should be able to bring it back.
We'll work together to address this smoke shop issue as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Brandon.
Okay? Good, thank you. Councilman Harris.
Well, nothing quite so significant as that, just a couple of announcements. There'll be a ribbon cutting this Thursday, August 24th, at 11:00 a.m. for the grand reopening of the remodeled McDonald's in my district at 3,006 K Street. And join me and the Public Works Department for the grand opening of the Carlson Drive Street Improvement Project, which is a big one, and this was five years in the making and very successful, this Friday, August 25th, at 10:00 a.m. at the Urmul Memorial, which is located near the intersection of Carlson Drive and H Street, and there will be some parking at Sac State Parking Lot 11. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got two announcements I want to present. One is the seventh anniversary celebration of the Robbie Waters Library, and that's going to take place on Saturday, the 26th, from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m., and we encourage the community to come out and... And we encourage the community to come out and celebrate seven years of an incredible library next to a school, School of Engineering and Science, one that's being well-used. We've got lots of entertainment, got carnival games, we've got a story walk, Mustache Mike's Italian Ice, and all, and Sac PD's Safety Bear is going to be there as well to make a special appearance. So it's going to be a great evening, I mean, afternoon, and we encourage you to come out, celebrate seven years of the Robbie Waters Library. So also, on Sunday, the 27th, I want to make an announcement with the Sacramento Kings and the Dave Yeager Foundation. We're going to give 500 backpacks to kids in the Oak Park community. Councilmember Chenier is working with us on this. To schools of Bret Hart Elementary School, Father Kenny Elementary School, and Oak Ridge Elementary School. These are kids that have been identified by the school as the neediest kids in the school. And so we'll have a list of those kids. Unfortunately, people just can't walk up and get a backpack, but there will be backpacks with school supplies to kids who have been identified by the school as the neediest kids in order for them to be able to do better in their schoolwork and have the confidence to be great students. So I'm excited to work with Councilmember Chenier in his office and Dave Yeager, the coach of the Sacramento Kings. We're looking forward to a wonderful day with food, basketball camp, and these backpacks that we're going to give away to 500 kids.
Love it. Councilman Chenier.
Actually, three things here. First of all, I just want to announce some events. First of all, Thursday night, Colonial Heights Neighborhood Association has their monthly meeting at the Colonial Heights Library at 6:30. Friday night, we'll continue to do our Oak Park Peace Walks, and I want to thank Chief Hahn for coming with us. I also want to just note that about every third car that passed us as we were walking honked and waved at them. So it was really heartwarming to see. I mean, that's what we want, is the connections to the neighborhood. So that was great. We'll be starting at 6:00 p.m. at New Hope, which is on Sutterville or 12th Avenue and right by 99 Freeway. Friday night, we have Curtis Park Movie Night, Beauty and the Beast will be showing. Saturday night, Belle Coolidge Movie Night, we'll be doing Trolls. And then Sunday night is Music in the Park in Curtis Park. That starts at 6 o'clock with Mr. Cooper for the kids, and then on-air, we'll be playing after that, and I will be exercising my arm and scooping ice cream again. Three things for the city manager. Sorry, out of a third. If we could get, Mr. Garrett and I both talked about trying to bring ShotSpotter to our neighborhoods, so I'd like to see if we can get a update on that. Obviously, we've had additional shootings happening in the area, and I think that would be really helpful. I know that Ken Bernard has reached out to the county about the potential of splitting that, and they were looking at their budget, but if we can get an update on that, that would be great. Two other things that we've had some discussion about that I would love to see if you could bring back some information. One is a work program that would be a day work program, something along the lines of what they're doing in Albuquerque. I think it could help us, as we spent a lot of time today talking about panhandling and other things, if we could start to employ some of those folks in some of the needs that we have in cleaning up our parks and cleaning up our streets and other things, particularly things that have been caused by folks who are homeless or out of work. I, I know we would also want to sit down with Local 39. I just want to recognize that about any potential union issues that we would have. So that's one thing. The other piece that we talked about was the potential for either lock, lockers or storage for folks as they're taking their carts around or trashcans or whatever it is. I think it would do, go a long way to help them as well, potentially reduce some crime of people stealing things, but also just, just cleaning that up on a general basis. So those are the items that I'd love to hear back on. We do want to, I don't know if that's, that can be readable. So we want to adjourn the meeting tonight in the memory of Mario Gutierrez. And I'm going to be very brief here, because I want to leave this up for a few minutes. You know, great cities have great individuals, and Mario was certainly a great individual in the city. And beyond the city was a, just a good man, and did great things, not only for Sacramento, but for multiple communities that he served. I, I don't think I could touch what his children wrote in this obituary about him. So my hope was that we could just leave this up on the screen for a few minutes if people want to take a look at it. I know, I, I knew Mario for, I think, 20, over 20 years. Rick was a friend, and I know Daryl, you knew him as well, and others. He was also a neighbor of mine. So it's, it's been a tough week for, for us all. Certainly want to give our condolences to his wife, Deb, and his children, Gabby and Pablo. So with that, I'm just going to be quiet and let people take a look at this.
Thank you. Appropriate moment of silence. I know there's a service tomorrow.
Services tomorrow is at Sierra Health at 2:00 with a reception to follow.
And I think you said it all very, very nicely. Thank you, Jay. Finally, want to announce, on a happy note, and I think this is something that Mario would have no doubt been very happy about. Saturday, we opened the California Unity Center to the public. And those of you who know the story know that this was a project a long time in coming. 18 years ago, this community was victimized by a series of horrendous hate crimes. And we all dreamed, including one of my predecessors who sat up here, like Joe Serna Jr., and others, that we would make a permanent commitment to fighting hate and intolerance, not only in our community and our state. And through a lot of ups and downs, we arrive at Saturday, and I suppose, not intended, but the timing could not be more, could be, could not be more appropriate or needed than it is today, not in Sac, not just in Sacramento, but in the United States of America. And so 10 to 4, the public is welcome. It's free, obviously. And free ride day for RT as well. And if you can't make it out Saturday, I hope you'll come to the California Museum, of course, which is, which we all know where that is, just to the, just to the south of the state capitol. And take advantage of this wonderful resource. I've been through it now a couple of times, and it's very, very impactful. And kids will, kids will participate and, I think, remember it for the rest of their lives. So hopefully, we'll see you Saturday, and in Mario Gutierrez' memory, we stand in adjournment. Thank you.